Good evening, everybody. Make it in. All right, this is a virtual meeting using the Zoom platform. Members of the public can view this meeting live on channel eight or C three gov dot com slash video. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council study session by telephone. Please now seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one star. If you're a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on channel eight and on our city's website. The chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I and our our IT director will be the co-host for tonight's study session. Council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. This time we'll call the study session to order. We have four presentations on the agenda for this evening. The first is a comprehensive plan city council and planning commission roundtable. Would like to invite Jenny Oxmacher, principal planner to lead the discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm very excited to be here tonight to introduce our consultant team for our comprehensive plan kickoff meeting. I'm also thrilled to have our planning commission members here as well. Before we get started, I just wanted to give a couple of quick updates. We had our first citizens advisory committee earlier in January, and so I just wanted to thank you all for appointing such thoughtful and engaged members to that committee. The meeting went very well. We've also had meetings with our staff working group and our technical advisory committee, and those meetings have gone great as well. So our next workshop with you all will be our visioning workshop, which I believe will take place in April. So I just wanted to get you all to start thinking about your vision for Commerce City in 2045 and at the build out of the community. So do we see Commerce City? As a currently, the population is about sixty five thousand. Are we going to get to a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand will be, will we be a city of a quarter of a million? And how do you envision Commerce City developing? Is it going to be dense and urban or more suburban? Just a couple of things to start thinking for that April meeting. And lastly, before I introduce our consultant, I would like to introduce a new member of our Commerce City planning team. We have Jamie Rice, who has joined us. And so I just wanted to introduce you to her. She's going to be taking a more active role in the comprehensive planning update process. So you're always welcome to reach out to me with any questions, but Jamie will be an important resource as well. And with that, here's Josh Kuntz to take it away.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen. If I could.
You should be able to now, Josh.
Okay, thank you. And actually, John Houseill is here with us tonight, too, and I'm gonna let him do the introductions before we kick things off or before we get into the discussion.
Yes, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say a few words before Josh runs us through the program first. It's nice seeing you all again, even though it's not face to face. Hopefully, we'll get to that sooner rather than later in our process as things begin to normalize hopefully over the next year. But thanks for having us here this evening. As you all know, I've met or talked with most of you at least once before. We're beginning this process. We've had meetings with the citizen advisory committee, the strategic advisory committee and the staff working group. We've got some workshops coming up that Josh is going to go over with the community pretty soon. Four workshops coming up, one being held entirely in Spanish and translation available with the other ones. I just wanted to say again, it's nice to get this project officially underway. At the beginning of every project, we like to spend an evening or an hour or so with the elected and appointed officials that really are the ones who establish and shepherd policy in the community. It's really important for us to get a sense of where your heads are at, what you think is most important, what you think the city ought to be doing and what issues you think are facing the community over the next decade or two. So with that, again, John Houseill with Houseill Levine, Josh Kuntz, project manager, will be taking us through this evening's program. And then Mika is also with us and associate with her firm. You've probably met and will continue to meet and engage with us over the course of the assignment. The other members on our team besides Houseill Levine is Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech will be doing infrastructure and environmental. JR Engineering is assisting with with traditional transportation, vehicular transportation, rail, and then tool design is helping us with active transportation, bicycling, pedestrian mobility, things that are non-motorized. So again, I just wanted to say hi this evening. Glad to get this officially underway. With that, I'm just gonna turn it over to Josh. He's gonna walk us through the program.
Thanks, John, and thanks again to Mayor, council members and planning commission for having us tonight. I just want to start off with a little recap, and I won't dwell too long on this because I know that most of you are probably familiar with what a comprehensive plan is, but for for this project, what we see as a as the comprehensive plan should do is it needs to communicate Commerce City's vision, goals, objectives, and really provide a blueprint for your future land uses and then serve as the basis for your regulatory framework, your zoning and development regulations. So it's a policy guidebook. It is not your zoning and development controls. And then important part of the comprehensive plan right up front, it has to reflect the input of the community, especially for the vision section of the of the plan. It needs to reflect where the community wants to go in the future. And this is a document that you can see right from the title Commerce City 2045. It's a long range document. We're looking out a couple decades for where Commerce City is going to be in twenty to twenty five years. It's going to transcend councils and boards, and it's going to provide a line of continuity that will be useful for staff, for you all, your for elected and appointed officials, and then also for your developers and for the average resident in the city. It's going to be followed closely this process by the transportation plan, the parks, recreation and golf plan, and the economic development strategic plan. So this is a the first and kind of the centerpiece of the of the series of projects for of planning for your city. I'll I'll breeze through these bullet points, then I don't know if Jenny Exmacher wants to chime in here. This plan is also going to be governed by the comprehensive plan charter. That's going to be designed to set those clear expectations for the project and communicate what the roles are for all participants, whether you're, you know, sitting where I am as a consultant. We really view ourselves as part of the planning staff team or a staff member or council member commissioner or a member of one of the various committees that's been put together to shepherd this process, a member of the CPAC or the CAC, TAC, or the staff working group. Jenny, did you want to say anything else about the charter?
Yeah, thanks, Josh. I just want to let everyone know that we'll be bringing that document to council likely in March for review and approval, and that it just, as Josh mentioned, sets out clear expectations for the projects. Thank you.
Next. Our planning process. We are looking at about eight steps, but really, when you think about planning for anything, whether it's a large process like this, multiple plans, beginning with a comprehensive plan, or if you're planning a party in your backyard, you really need to think about three things, where you are right now, where you're going, and then how do you get there? So if you're looking at this series of project steps, really, one through four, steps one through four are where we are today in Commerce City. So one of the things about House Levine, we do planning all over the country. We're based in Chicago, but we've worked in, I think, over thirty states at this point and done done projects in over three hundred communities across the country. But we do not come to Colorado or to Commerce City with a template that we try to wedge the community into. So what we need to do in steps one through four is listen to the community, establish a baseline of existing conditions and get a firm understanding of where Commerce City is today. And then looking at step five, the community vision, goals and objectives. This is where we where are we going? Where do we want to go as a community? This is an aspirational statement, thinking ahead to 2045. What what should Commerce City look like if the comprehensive plan is fully executed? And then lastly, step six through eight, that's really where we going. This is the where we get into the development of the plant's core recommendations, its policies, its core elements, the sub area plans, which are focused areas of the city that need special attention, and then get into the process of final plan documents and adoption. And you can see that community engagement, it's identified there in step two. Kicking off community engagement, that's something that really begins with step one, with delivery of the website and the community questionnaire and community engagement tools and activities extend from step one through step eight throughout the process. So even though they're detailed, if you're looking at your project timeline, they're detailed in step two. That's a process that's going to continue throughout the the project. So I guess I'll stop there. I'll see if there's any questions before we move on, because what we want to do next is a brainstorming session and get some feedback on on your take on Commerce City and some of the things that we need to hear from you. But if there's any questions, I'll take them now.
Are there any questions from council regarding this? Councilmember Hearst.
That is a quick question. Is this intended to solely be a twenty five year plan? Are we going to break this down into more of a ten year deliverable plan as well?
Sure. So I think you hit the nail on the head there. This plan has to be implementable. It has to be action oriented and something that the community can bite off in chunks. It's not something that you want to sit on for twenty years and then say, we gotta, we gotta check all these boxes at the end. So when we deliver the plan, what will be included is what we call an implementation action matrix, and we've put those together in a variety of ways. But typically, they have sort of short term, short, medium and long term actions that the city can undertake to meet the goals of the comprehensive plan. And another thing about the document is that while it's looking out, we're thinking long term to 2045. It's really a best practice that the city sort of investigate where the comprehensive plan is every three to five years or so, I would say. So I believe your last comprehensive plan document, I believe that was a 2010 document or maybe a 2009. So even though it was looking out a ways, we're here ten years later and we're we're thinking farther into the future.
Yeah, I appreciate that explanation. I just want to make sure, you know, if we're setting forth the vision for 2045, I want to know what it's going to take for us to get there over the next ten years, you know, what needs to be done to attain that vision in 2045. So appreciate that. I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of the short term in this as well.
There any other questions at this time, councilmember Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. Will we be discussing the constraints also? It's one thing to have a vision for what Commerce City will be in 2045. It's quite another to consider the constraints that all communities are going to be facing for a variety of reasons, whether it be water, climate change, et cetera.
Absolutely, and that's, you couldn't have said it better. What are the constraints in a community? That's what we need to know upfront. Some of the things, you know, of course, we do know a little bit about, having worked in Colorado in a variety of communities, we know about the constraints on water for communities. We're all experiencing the constraints of COVID and the uncertainty that comes along with that. So there's certain things that we absolutely know that communities are facing, but the first part of this process, these first these first few steps of the project are all about hearing what the issues and opportunities in Commerce City are and what are those constraints? And we're going to get even a little bit into that with you all tonight in the in the brainstorming questions that we have next.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. My question is, since we had the comprehensive plan back in 2010, will this kind of mirror that process to kind of include maybe those timelines to fit into 2045 or this? Will this be a different spin off in a total direction, different direction? Thank you.
Councilmember, that's a great point. One of the things that that is is a fact with the comprehensive planning process is that we are, to a certain extent, we are updating your previous comprehensive plan. So if there's still things that are valid that need to be carried forward, whether it's a specific action or recommendation, or if it's a goal that's really still relevant for the community, we're not looking to throw out the old document, but if things are still things that the city is working towards, they can be rolled into this process. Absolutely. Yeah, the plans are iterative and they they need to build on existing plans and existing studies that the city has done. So not only your previous comprehensive plan, but some of your smaller area plans and studies that the city has that are still really recent and relevant, those are going to be important to be considered as part of this process, too.
Mr. Yost.
Josh, could you give us an idea of other communities that you've worked for or built plans for in the Colorado? In the state of Colorado?
Sure, I can. I can rattle off a few and I might miss a couple, but John's on the line, and I know he knows them all. Just me personally, I've worked in on comprehensive plan projects in Gunnison, Grand Junction, and those are both complete, and we're also in the process of working on a comprehensive plan for Canyon City, Colorado. And then our firm, I'm not working on the project, but our firm is working on a comprehensive plan for El Paso County. And we've also done plans for Frederick, Colorado, Windsor, Aurora, and if I'm missing one.
Fort Lupton.
Fort Lupton, that's right.
And we just started last week a sub area plan in Frederick for a huge area right next to an adjacent to twenty five as it heads north through Frederick. So we've done about seven or eight comprehensive plans and a sub area plan and a zoning ordinance in Colorado. So quite a few, and that's just in the last four or five years.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Are there any other questions at this time? Seeing none, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Next thing we want to get into is a little, a little bit of a brainstorming session, and we ask a series of questions that we like to ask throughout the first stage of the planning process about issues and opportunities that are facing the city. But then we also have one toward the end here that's tailored toward this group and sort of your unique insight. So the way that we've done this recently with your advisory council and the technical advisory group and the staff working group is that we've used the hand raised session and Mayor, I guess I'll work with you to to call on the council members as they have answers. So the first question that I I have for the group is what are the most important issues or concerns facing Commerce City? These can be in not just land use issues or concerns, but from where you're sitting, what what is the single biggest or the two or three greatest issues or concerns that are facing the city right now? And I'll just turn it over to turn it over to the council and the commission to answer these this question. And I can stop sharing my screen if we want to see everyone's faces.
To remember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you. Some big top issues that I feel right now are going on are air and water quality along with growth, and then I think safe and health, safe and healthy welfare of all the residents is big important. So those are my top ones that I feel are top issues and concerns. Thanks.
Mr. Yost.
The concern that I have is that we're split into two different cities. One, the northern half. And put in between the northern and southern sections of Commerce City is the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. My concern or my objective is to marry those two separate entities into one. That's all I have.
Good, thanks, council.
I just want to respond real quickly, Josh, to what Councilman Yost said. That's a really astute observation, and I would say in probably sixty to eighty percent of the comprehensive plans we've done across the country, and we've done a couple hundred, there's some perceived or actual division in the community, south of the tracks, north of the tracks, east of a highway, west of a highway, and here, north or south, and the arsenal and some of the other divide. Those divisions can really be cemented over time if you don't address them to find a way to unify the community. And it's often one area the city feels is so they're not getting the investment or the treatment or they're sort of forgotten about as as another area becomes the shiny penny that's getting all the attention. So you're a hundred percent spot on, and that's when cities can begin to decay from the inside out if those areas don't get brought into the fold as one community. So you're a hundred percent spot on. Yeah.
Mayor Protem.
I would second the what David Yost was saying about the divide between the city. I think that that just continues to be a huge issue as much as I want to feel like it's getting better. I don't think that it is. And then also the retail, I think, needs to be a strong push, getting more retail overall on the city.
Yeah, thanks. What what type of retail do you think is lacking in Commerce City?
You know, I'm I'm not sure, but I mean, it's definitely frustrating that, you know, again, we kind of go back to Prairie Center where there's like all this huge development and we don't have, you know, I mean, it would be great if we could get some type of like larger anchor type store and or mall to kind of go with that. But again, restaurants, I mean, we have State House thirty eight, which is kind of like our first like more sit down restaurant in like the northern area, I think, more establishments like that would be ideal.
Sure, and then I think that that tracks exactly with what we're seeing, where people are increasingly looking to have those experiences, you know, a sit down restaurant, and that's definitely the kind of retail that cities are looking toward increasingly as a lot of the other other types of commerce is moving online.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like also, I think the balance between residential and commercial. I think there's a huge imbalance right now is we have more rooftops than like Mayor Protem was saying, restaurants, different type of stores. So I think that's one of the big issues of having a balanced strategic growth plan, development plan. I agree with David Yost about the northern and core. I think the gap is getting wider on multiple levels from the historic point to and the old time kind of Karma Cityans to cultural. And so look at that. And then one thing that we don't have a lot to do with on our end, but education. We deal with two education or two districts, and they're night and day, they're night and day, and both of them, our residents go to both of them, and you could see the gaps in both districts from the northern twenty seven J to Adams fourteen, which is under a management company right now. So I think somehow we have to work that out. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that that up. I think we hear about education in in most of the projects that we do, and you hit the nail on the head that, to a certain extent, that's a different district, a different entity that the city influences tangentially, you know, it touches on where new schools can go and partnering with the the school districts. So there's things that the comprehensive plan can influence, but then there's also steps that the the district has to take. So I appreciate you bringing that up, and it influences whether people want to move to the city or not, to which parts, so.
Councilmember Smith.
So I'd echo a few things that Mayor Protem said, economic development and growth. As someone who loves shopping and loves to eat, it's kind of frustrating when we have to go to Denver or to Brighton, and you see that these places growing and on fifty six just east of Quebec, they have a new Panda Express, and it's just kind of a bummer that they get it, and why can't we? And then also, like Mr. Yost and Jose and Councilman Wadiola said, the divided city, there is, so I work on the ambulance in the city, and you can tell the difference between the southern part of the city and the northern range, and it just, there needs to be a way to build that bridge between the two.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, I have a couple of things written down. So I agree with the balance discussion about residential and business. We really have to decide our growth, but in doing so, I think we have to take advantage of our location. I think standard retail is is changing faster than ever before. And so putting, you know, all of our eggs in that basket may not be smart. So looking how we are going to adapt with those types of changes in the future, so we can have that balance and continue to have a business supportive tax base, you know, that in a good place for people to live and work. Also agree with Councilman Wadiola on educational opportunities. I think at the very least, looking to partner with a community college or have some type of vocational program or something here in in Commerce City, specifically, I look towards the Mile High Greyhound Park. It's a great opportunity for us to get it right in that sense with the corner that is that is kind of dedicated for educational purposes. And so I think that's something we can we can focus on business retention. You know, at least in the short term, I think a long term business development strategy would be business retention today and and looking for regulatory opportunities to help businesses grow in our in our city and want to stay here or because nothing, nothing better will sell our city than successful businesses able to grow and continue to be plentiful here in Commerce City. So we can make all the marketing employees we want, but if we have businesses failing here, that's never going to work. And so business retention has to be very important to us and just new ideas on, you know, I hear everybody, and I've always heard everybody talk about connecting the north and south, but I haven't heard one idea that stuck on how that's possible and one that works. And I agree that there's no silver bullet. There's not. There's not a suggestion coming from me that I know the answer to that, but we need some fresh ideas, I think, good outside perspective on that. I've heard the mayor, you know, proposed a city park idea that I thought was, you know, a fantastic opportunity to, you know, continue to bake as a good idea and see what we can get out. you know, continue to bake as a good idea and see what we can get out of it and move forward. So, yeah, I want to hear kind of outside of the box ideas too. You know, I would kind of ask everybody, including, you know, all of our citizens to throughout your crazy idea, because it might work. You never know. I mean, there's a lot of things in play when crazy ideas, how, you know, we talked about, it was a halfway joke and halfway accepted joke that you could build a concert venue on top of the old, the unused section or the of the landfill, you know, it'd be a pretty cool venue to look down, look down. And so, you know, or a little snow sled area during the winter there, whatever the case may be. I mean, there's things that are challenges in our community like the landfill that are going to be there forever that we can overcome by thinking outside of the box. And so that, you know, I agree with everybody, everything everybody said. I just want us to get focused on items that really drive that change we all want to see. Because we say this, you know, we keep, we continue to say we want the city connected, but it's very hard to find that because the federal government is never going to give up the arsenal for for reasons that we all understand. You know, the reclamation work that's done there, and it's just not not going to be part of Commerce City in the future. And so we really have to work over that barrier and find new outside of the box ideas that can really be the connecting driver between the two, but it's going to be a challenge because minus a bridge or a tunnel, it's going to be tough to cut that transportation gap off.
Yeah, absolutely. And I appreciated what you said about retaining existing businesses hugely. So important for the comprehensive plan to be thinking about those existing important corporate citizens that are part of the community also. And that's, we are going to have two business workshops that's going to be focused on listening to the business community developers, business owners. So that I definitely agree with you there.
So if I could just add that last bullet point that I forgot or forgot to add, but water, like you started off with, water is really important. But but in a lot of different ways for Commerce City, right? We have potentially, hopefully next month, a water softening project in our water district that couldn't play a major impact, you know, a positive impact. But that should be just the beginning of those discussions on how we can have better water quality here. But water resources is going to continue to be a fight in every state in the West. And if we can't, and I think the city's done a good job getting in front of it, but without owning our own water district, we're always going to have relationship challenges, if you will, where we want to be the priority, and we may not always be their priority. And so, you know, getting a balance on that, continuing to build those relationships and make sure that our water projects are prioritized regionally is going to be a huge priority for our ability to grow if we have, you know, a vision of becoming larger than a hundred thousand.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. I would I would echo a lot of what's been said already specifically related to joining the northern range with the core city as well as business retention. I think that's huge. One thing I would say related to improvements in the core city, I think it's really important to keep in mind that the more we, the more we increase the value of property there, the more at risk we are of pricing our own residents out of their homes. And so I think that's a delicate balance to play. I think absolutely we need to be making improvements and in the core city, huge advocate of doing that, but we want to be careful and balance the two things there. And then I would just add to all the other great suggestions already that I think we're seeing increased homelessness, and I think that's something that we need to be aware of as we're making comprehensive plans and ways to address homelessness within our communities. And that, excuse me, lastly, increased crime has become a fairly prevalent topic that I think we need to be aware of as we look at developing our comprehensive plan as well.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Yeah. Housing affordability, attainability, whether you're just starting out on your first home or you're looking to upgrade to your your second or third home, you know, your steps along the way. Good communities have options for their residents to stay in place, age in place, and grow with their families. So I think absolutely right. And as you improve areas, you want to make sure that the residents who call the city home can can stay with the city.
Councilmember Noble.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Commissioner Douglas was before me. Thank you.
I'm going through all the council members, then I'll go through the commissioners. Would you like to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard Mr. Yost speak. I'd rather wait until the people who would already raise their hands, Mayor, get their opportunity to speak.
Mr. Popeye.
Thank you, Mayor. And just so you let know, Josh, you know, some of you've called a few of us, you know, Councilman and Councilwoman. We have planning commission here, quite a few of us. I think there's seven of us on board with some of the alternates as well, too, Josh, just so you know. To me, no stone should be unturned. I mean, we look at our borders. I think all the borders could take a look at. I think, you know, just don't accept to me what the southern border of Commerce City could be or is now and what it could be. I think there's a tremendous opportunity to expand the successes of the southern part of the, along with the northern part, right? We've seen a tremendous amount of growth in the northern part with the residential side, which might not have some of the strengths that we're seeing in the southern side. I think that needs to be looked at. I think the the northern half is seeing that residential side. But even if you, just like you were saying, Ms. Frank, you know, going down Tower, you know, some development goes on the other side of Penny Boulevard, but doesn't come on our, you know, our northern side. So we have to have, you know, key development that wants developers to come build in our cities. And that's part of this master plan that we have. And I think another great opportunity is, like you said, is looking at the borders, but also that north east half that borders DIA. I think there's a tremendous amount of land opportunities that could be a partnership potentially with Adams County that can become city of Commerce City land. I think that's something that we should definitely take a look at. Transit, transit's huge, right? I mean, we've seen some transit stops that are going to help our city with the light rail. We've heard rumors about E four seventy potentially coming down that that we cannot miss that opportunity, in my opinion, and needs to be part of our master plan to help how people live and work in our city and transit down to whether it be Denver to the airport, wherever that might be. And then when we think big, right, Councilmember Hurst said it, I mean, I, when I think of big, I think, what are those key staples? I mean, I've I've heard of villages moving out of Denver. We know they want to move out of Denver. Where are they going to go? Right? Commerce City comes to mind. Not saying the Broncos would ever leave, right? But hey, you know, land's expensive in Denver. Could they come to Commerce City? I think some of those big plans need to be part of the master plan because I think eventually they're going to be looking for homes.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. I was had the opportunity to be part of the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan. And then back then, this northern area was on track to have high tech. And we were trying to change of looking like an industrial town. That's what Commerce City started out as, and and the northern area was supposed to spur up in different directions. So I think our challenges right now are is fracking oil and gas, making sure everything we do has health, safety, welfare in it. When it comes to transportation, it would be nice to have a spur in the northern area off a tower road with the existing light rail. Because our road is built for a third outside lane of traffic, whether it's rail or car. When it comes to the southern area, we need to have a downtown portion of Commerce City, something we can call downtown. I think that'd be great for a target center to bring in people into the south and actually have people actually travel to the north to the south with the target center when it comes to retail and attraction. High tech secondary education that would also put us on the map. And let's see. Oh, yeah, Councilman Hurst talked about water, and it'd be nice if we had in a northern area a future reservoir that would secure Commerce City's water futures. And aerospace and aviation, that's another big one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I liked what you said about needing a downtown. A downtown is kind of like the like the city's front yard. It's what you want to show your visitors and a place to kind of show off what what Commerce City is. So I definitely appreciate that.
Mr. Amador.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you, Councilman Hurst, for your quotes about working relationships with our South Adams Water and Sanitation District. I think that's going to be huge from the perspective that when we did a study to see how competitive Commerce City was versus Denver, the water prices to get utilities were just through the roof and would kill economic development altogether. Denver was just so much more competitive. So from a visionary standpoint, working with South Adams and the economic development to try to provide incentives if we could. And then I also really like Commissioner Douglas's comments about potentially building a reservoir somewhere. So we were in control of possibly our own water. I know there's challenges there, but one of those two ideas. And then I would think since we're going into the future, looking at Victory Crossings, so right across Quebec Street, for the most part, from fifty sixth all the way down to seventy second, where the high school is at, looking to work with the developers to develop that for restaurants and whatnot, because we know that we do have infrastructure there as well with components of education and or restaurants as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you so much. And everyone, thank you. Such thoughtful answers. It's really exciting what the possibilities could be for Commerce City. I would also like to add careers, not jobs, in Commerce City. It would be wonderful if our industry could actually reflect what is coming in the next twenty five years. It's going to be quite different than what we're looking at right now. And this is a wonderful time for Commerce City to begin attracting and perhaps even flipping its image on its head, attracting the kind of industry that's going to be required for cities across the country to survive through the next twenty five years and thrive because of the dangers of climate change. I certainly, of course, agree with whatever we can do to have clean water and and also to protect health and safety. I'm very concerned and hope that we see the benefit of not going down the path of other communities like Fort Lupton, Grand Junction, and Frederick, which rely on oil and gas, Weld County, and Grand Junction's counties rely on only one industry, and it's harmful to them in terms of being able to keep up economically. In terms of retail, we'll attract retail when Commerce City has an image that attracts retailers here. And we can do a lot by hopefully in our in our vision of being able to attract those kind of retailers that we have been talking about and we have been seeking. But unfortunately, we have people who will say when they hear who look into moving or working in Commerce City and have a particular image of Commerce City that isn't the same as those of us who live here, but it is certainly what people on the outside think. And we can do a lot, a lot to change that. I was watching CBS Sunday Morning on Sunday. That's redundant. And they were talking with the mayor of Madison, Wisconsin, and nearly all of the government buildings have become sustainable. They're all solar. Their vehicles are all moving towards electric. These are all things that we can be heading towards that would really make a statement about Commerce City. I particularly would love to do something about the core city. And if we can have a wonderful reason for everyone to go there, then we would. So if we have the restaurants there and the businesses there and the retail there, the culture there, the art there that reflects Commerce City, then I think we would all, everyone would would have that direction, no matter whether you're in Commerce City or or elsewhere. Transit is very important, and the suggestion of of having a spur was a great one. And having reservoir is is a great idea, especially if we could use it like Dylan Dan. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to jump in and say something real quickly. You said so many things that I thought were really poignant and correct. The one that really resonated was about your image and how you're perceived maybe differently by those who live in Commerce City versus those who live in the region but not in Commerce City. And this comprehensive plan ought to be your best chance to begin to establish the narrative that you want to own. Because if you don't own your own narrative, you'll be defined by what other people say about you. And once other people in a region define who you are, it's really hard to undo that. So this is where you begin to lay out and set the table for who you want to be and own it and put it out there and define your own future and not be defined by what others have said in the past or are saying about you now. And consistency in messaging is huge, and this is a really good way to set that tone going forward. So I think you're exactly right that maybe one of the most important things that comes out of this plan is defining with a little bit more clarity and consistency who you want to be going forward and own that for everybody in the region. So you're not being defined by what others say. I think that's huge.
I agree. And and we're also not only bifurcated by the arsenal, but we're also bifurcated by a monstrous industrial zone. So you have houses on one side of it and houses on the other side, and of course, the two school districts. So those are very huge challenges. And I just want to be able to lift everyone's boat, if you will, you know, just make everyone excited to be here and excited about the future.
The other thing I'll say real quick is we're hearing about education. We're hearing about affordability. We're hearing about a chance to sort of reinvent who you are. The flow right now and the interest across the nation from millennials and people who are looking for the next stage in life or small businesses looking to reinvent, says entrepreneurs. It's those areas that are not the big shiny cities like a Denver or in Atlanta, but it's the ones just outside of those areas that have pockets of affordability, a little bit of history waiting to be rediscovered, an area of town that's been forgotten as a chance to reinvent itself. This is where people are beginning to go because housing is more affordable. They get to know the people walking down the street. They can see the mayor, the councilman, or the planning commission members say hi, and they say hi back. It's not too big. It's not too daunting, and they can really become an influential part of the community. So you're actually, I think, incredibly well positioned with opportunity and access for that next generation of investment and entrepreneur and sense of place. And there's a lot of articles out there in the ether you can read in print or online about this is exactly the type of community where next generation millennial investment is beginning to go to reinvent. And I think you're sitting right where you need to be.
I love that.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, too. I think I think I was going to say something similar, but with a little bit different spin. And really, you know, I agree, we have maybe an image issue, but I also think we have a trade zone issue. And we already talked about it with others of, you know, the Northfield shops and the Brighton Prairie Center were you know, pinched between those two with not much residential density to support a third. And so we, that's why I was trying to say we have to be And so that's why I was trying to say we have to be realistic, and we can't be scared of what we are. I mean, our name is Commerce City. We have some of the most, if not the most important industries in our entire state. Take away oil and gas. We have over 200 transportation companies. And like 80% of construction trucking origins come from Commerce City. So our state is built out of Commerce City. We would feel it in two days if we shut down Commerce City businesses. Don't be scared of that. That is what drives our city. That's what we are. Why can't we look at the future as educational opportunities to educate folks to be electric trucks techs? You can't transition from diesel if you don't have people who can work on electric trucks. Our electrical infrastructure is the oldest in the state. It will never support electrification of trucking. We have no chance at that without millions into our electrical infrastructure in Commerce City. Those things aren't going to change in terms of the demand. The demand for trucking and delivering is supposed to raise by over 300% by 2045. So even if you start talking about driverless trucks, we have plenty to do to do with the growth of transportation in Commerce City and the adaptation towards electrification that we could be looking towards leading the industry or leading the state towards that. And really, it's for good reason. We need the upgrades the most, and we should get them first because these businesses are centralized here. But those come with their own set of challenges, and we would need to solve for those as well. And so I guess the biggest thing for me is understanding and kind of developing that image has to align with everything else that we're talking about. If we want to grow and bring retail in, then we need more rooftops. Our trade zone is not going to support a large retail center if we don't. And so because we, like we just talked about, we're already pinched between the two. And so we really have to have a holistic approach about the message that we're sending because we can't want one thing and deny another that would support, you know, getting to that final goal. And so everything that's been talked about here are great ideas. I just think the significance of of having a team to put this all together is taking those ideas and blending them into a long-term vision that is sustainable, that we can deliver on. And that does put us in a good position of the future to be, you know, a thriving suburb of a major city.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Guardiola.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely agree. But, you know, I always look at the Prairie View Center. There's no rooftops over there, right? And then there's Bar Lake across. And I get what you're saying, Councilman Hurst. There has to be a balance, but, you know, we always hear we need more rooftops, rooftops. That's how we get. And I don't know what happened in Brighton, but there's no rooftops around there. Now there is. And look at what that huge center is. And the other thing is, right by there is healthcare, right? Like Commerce Cityans, we have to go to, I mean, depending on your insurance, we have to go to North Suburban or Platteville or Platte Valley for the hospitals. We do have Saloo here. So I think, looking forward, if we're going to grow that much, I think a hospital or urgent care, something in that regards has to be in our comp plan that our residents could utilize also. Thank you.
Mr. Yost.
Image is everything. Image is everything. I've lived in Colorado for 63 years. And Commerce City has always been, how should I say, the armpit of the Denver Metroplex. My vision is to change that branding and letting people know that Commerce City is one of the best places and the most affordable places to live within the Denver Metroplex is paramount. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, Councilman Guardiola, the only thing I would say about Brighton is when you market something like that, they look at, it's a regional impact because of what their, you know, staple facility is target in Home Depot. So they're looking at a regional, and then they have frontage to an interstate. And that's where we have to be realistic with ourselves, is what I'm saying, is if we had interstate frontage like Stapleton or like the Northfield Shopping Center does, or like the one in Brighton, we would have a huge piece of what it takes to bring in one of those. But without open land on an interstate frontage, we have some challenges. And that's why I'm trying to say our trade zone isn't perfect. And so we're going to have to think outside of the box and adapt to what's available to come into a trade zone that's like ours. And, you know, some of the development now may not look like it's trending to help us. But one of the biggest things I hear from a restaurant perspective is you're a bedroom community. You only can support dinner. You can't support lunches. There's no jobs in the community up there. So how are we supposed to continue to have a full day business? You know, we can't pay rent if we're only having one shift. And so those are the types of things that drive daytime spending that will help drive in other businesses. And so, again, I think you're on the same boat as me, Councilman Guardiola, is finding that balance that works. That's the, you know, million dollar question, I guess you would say, is what is that perfect balance to make this a fine place to live, but also balanced with enough commercial and retail to kind of support all of those other, you know, amenities that come along with that density and that ability to have that in our town and support that.
Councilmember Noble.
Retailers are a bright bunch, so they'll go where they know the market is and where it will be good for their company to be. So right now, we're not being the kind of city that attracts retail. And that's what I hope that we can move towards. The other issue that we haven't brought up, and I think we need to look at also, is the high cost of metro districts in Commerce City. And that also is something that people outside Commerce City know before they move here that the northern end is quite expensive. It is often blamed on the city itself, but it's really a metro district issue. And unless we find a way to curb metro district expenses, it will affect us as well. In some ways, we're operated like a company town. We are directed by the developers and directed by the major industry here. And whatever we need to do is basically to fall in line and keep those going. I would really like us to be able to think outside the box and what we would do if things were different.
Mr. Ingram.
Yeah, I think one of the, you know, major things with the city and Councilmember Hurst hit on it earlier was, you know, the arsenal's not going anywhere. So, you know, transportation in the future, you know, I think it'll help, you know, retail, you know, along with, you know, bringing the core and the northern range together. You know, if there's not a, you know, a transportation plan that gets, you know, people from, you know, the northern range or from the core city back and forth. You know, right now, you know, say you want to go from the northern range, you're going to go, you know, Tower de Pena or, you know, down to 76. You know, especially after Highway Two had the, you know, reduced speed limit. So I think without a major overhaul of that portion of the plan to kind of bring everything together with, you know, main, you know, I won't call it necessarily high speed, but, you know, pretty easy transit back and forth, especially if there's a, you know, a downtown area in the core city. You know, you got to be able to get down there pretty easily. Otherwise, you're going to, you know, kind of want to go other places. So I think that's an important aspect of it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's physical connections between the two parts of the city that's going to be an important part of this plan. And then that's going to also tee up the transportation plan that will be following this. I do have a few following this. I think we're starting to touch on maybe my next question. So I don't want to cut anyone off, but I might flip the slide to the next slide, if you all want to see that question.
The Councilmember Hurst answered this first question one last time before we go on.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to lay out the reality of metro districts is we voted for that. I mean, we're not going to have, we're not going to switch up and have everybody in the south pay for development in the north. And so that is your plan towards development. So we can either stop developing and start or start paying for it upfront. Because the only way to get new development without the city first putting in all the roads and everything else is to either be non-competitive with our neighbors or pay for it all upfront on ourselves and really commit to growth from the city's pocketbook instead of passing it on to a metro district. Metro districts are completely found inside your service plan. So it is on the city. It's as much on us as it does on anybody else. We're approving all the service plans, and those come from the want and the desire to grow without wanting to fund and go into debt and have bonds out for the whole city to pay for. And so managing around those, quite honestly, as long as the information's out there and the homeowners take over is actually a safer way. If we've done appropriately, it's a much safer way to secure long-term preservation of assets in the city. And so to me, we just have to get that information out there correctly, understand it correctly, and manage that like we've all been talking about for a long time, because they can spiral out of control if they're left on unmanaged or managed with limited scope of who it's going to benefit. But in all reality, asking the whole city to take on growth is, goes against everything that was voted on in the 90s for the expansion of Commerce City where the north pays for its own growth. And so, you know, we hear about that all the time. We hear about, yo, the north has this and the north has that. But it's not coming out of Commerce City's, you know, tax pocketbook, if you will. It's coming out of the next 35 years of the people living in that community. And so we have to, that's part of our image. If that's part of the problem why people don't want to move here, then we failed in educating and communicating what a metro district really does for this city. Because without them, the north range is going to struggle to grow because unless all of our neighboring communities don't have metro districts themselves. Because, you know, we can say, oh, pass that cost on the developers, and then our houses cost, you know, $75,000 more. And now we've priced out the people that we want to live in our community. And so trying to manage metro districts, part of it is just getting and understanding what they're really there for and why they're there and how to manage them appropriately without extending debt, you know, terms and things like that, then yeah, they can be a huge benefit to our community. But if we don't put the parameters around them, then they can continue to be a liability. I just think we have to steer that in because metro districts can be a fantastic opportunity for sustainable growth, if done appropriately.
Councilmember Noble.
Councilmember Hurst, I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to indicate that we couldn't have metro districts at all. That wasn't what I was trying to imply. I completely agree that we need to do something about service plans. I'm merely saying that these have become quite expensive, and there are people who are saying they're moving. I know you see that yourself on social media because of the expenses. So it's something we need to look at in terms of mill levies. In January of last year, we voted for an investigation of metro districts and service plans. And to date, that has not occurred. I had asked for a commission at the time, but that was voted down. But it was on your motion, Councilmember Hurst, that we asked to move forward with an investigation. And I look forward to that occurring because we do need a better handle on it in order to make this not only affordable, but affordable for the long term. You don't want it to be affordable just the first or second year before the real taxes kick in.
Yeah, and I think that was generated because I've seen how a good metro district can be ran. And then you hear all the nasty stories, you know, through social media or whatever, on the more expensive or bad metro districts. And so it would be good to get some clarification because, you know, there are experiences that are really good metro districts in the north range. And then there's some that are not necessarily pleasing all of their residents.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to that Commerce City is a logistic hub of Colorado. Not only do we have light, well, no, we have rail that comes in with logistics. We also have a lot of truck terminals. We have Highway 76, Highway 85, E470, 270, Highway 2. And then we have our east and west corridors, 120 to 104 to 96. So we have many ways of logistics coming in. And keep in mind, we passed a 1% sales tax back in 2013. So that helps stabilize our revenue when it comes to future budgets. And then when it comes to metro districts, it's not opposing metro districts. It's a way of structuring them so that, yes, their infrastructure is paid. But going forward, maybe the parks in Rex can be part of Commerce City of the 1% sales tax. That way, it would lessen the burden on the taxpayer. Thank you.
All right, sir. Please move forward.
Thanks. I'll just share my screen again here.
Okay, so the next question that I want to pose to everyone is, what are some projects, some specific projects or policies that you would like to see undertaken in the next 10 to 20 years to make Commerce City a better place? So what the question's looking for here is specificity. So connecting the north and the south, how would you do it? What would you connect the north to the south with? Would it be a new road? Would it be a bridge? Would there be some policies or things that could affect that connection? So rather than just say connect the two, I think what we want to get at is, what specifically would you do? This could be something that you've always sort of had in mind would be a good idea or something that you've thought of as you've heard your fellow commissioners or council members tonight or anything like that. So what are some specific projects, actions, policies that you would like to see over the next 10 to 20 years? And I'd love to hear from some of the council members or commissioners who haven't spoken yet also, if possible. Thank you.
I think one of the ways, real quick, to think about this. And so, you know, sort of like to put some humor into it, when we work with community audiences where the planning commission and the city council are not present, the way we pose the question is, let's say tomorrow, the city council and planning commission up and moved to Naples, and no one is here driving the ship, and everybody's looking at you and say, okay, you're in charge. You pick the top three things we can do to make this a better place. What are those top three things? Be specific. And it's all on you. We'll back your play, but you pick the three things we need to do to make this a better place. City council is gone. It's your call. And we sort of put people on the spot and say, what would you pick if you had to identify three specific things to do to make Commerce City a better place, and it was your call? So we try to make it pretty specific, and we really put it on people. And it makes them think about their city a little bit differently if they're in charge. So if you guys weren't our audience, that's what we would tell people who were our audience, that you guys weren't around anymore, and they had to fill the vacuum, so.
Mr. Yost.
Thank you. One of the visions that I have is an old town a spot in Derby, probably around the the post office where we could build Where we could build. A. Old Town. Where there would be a. A pavilion, a park. A meeting place. Concerts. Shops, restaurants. That both the northern and and southern communities. Could congregate. Similar to what Arvada put or. Similar to our Vada Old Town. Or similar to Laramore Square, or similar to a number of Old Town communities. That. Have come about. In the suburbs of Denver. A place for people to congregate, a place for people to shop, a place for people to. Enjoy the Hispanic culture. Of Commerce City.
Done. So. Downtown downtown square, public, public area. Traditional, a traditional downtown.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Thank you.
Councilmember Wario.
Yeah. Just kind of pigbacking off that, a cultural center. I know myself and Councilman Hurst sit on the Cultural Council and we're always looking. For a location. And I know there's some works in a couple of different areas of this, but just kind of like what Mr. David Yo said. You know, Derby would be an ideal place, but if it's not in Derby, somewhere where. You know, we could bring in live bands, we could bring in theater, we could bring in different things, we could have our art show there. So. You know, I think a cultural center. That supports all the arts. And and I think for the, and I know we're working on it now, but. Of equal representation from the northern and the core city. I know that's on our work plan. But as the North grows, it will outnumber the residents. I don't know by how much, but I know it's going to be a lot compared to the core. And I think we have to have a balance and equal representation. Who sits on this council? So we it could never be unbalanced. And I know Robert has done some work and we're going to be hearing some presentations, but I think that has to get done if not. This year or in the next five years, it has to get done before full growth up in the North.
Yeah. The cultural center kind of pairs nicely with the traditional downtown as well. Yeah.
Your pro team.
So I so kind of in the the Derby context, I would love to see. Something similar to like the Art District in Denver, like the Santa Fe Art District. I think Derby would be a really great spot to have something like that. And, you know. Do those Friday night art walks or something. And bring in the food trucks, because hopefully that would kind of help to bridge the gap and get people from the North down to the South. So and then also, so again, on the food truck thing, it would be great if we had. And I know there's a place that does this, and I can't remember the name, but where they bring in all the food trucks and then they have like the central court that. You can eat, but you can go pick from all the different food courts. That's another. Idea of something, you know, to have, I forget, I just forget the name of it. I think that's all I have.
Yeah, that's that's a great idea. One of the communities that we worked in. Had a food truck park where. Day to day, every single day, it was a kind of a normal downtown park, nice park, and it had. Around the edges, it had all the proper hookups for food trucks so that they could. Put on a food truck festival on the weekends. It was it was a great idea.
Mr. Ringo.
Yeah, I think one of the things that, you know, I'd like to see in, you know, in the previous question, Councilmember Hurst, you alluded to it. You know, I think, you know, Commerce City as a whole. You know, embracing the industrial, you know, part of the city and investing in, you know, utility upgrades or. You know, even in the industrial area, you know, say around, you know, SunCor and that kind of area to actually. You know, bring all the utilities up and to, you know. Maybe encourage or, you know, assist with beautification and stuff like that along the roadways or. Around the areas to kind of bring the, you know, that section of the city. You know, up to the, you know, the standards of, you know, modernization of everything. So. You know, I think that's something that we can invest in and really embrace instead of trying to. You know, say that, you know, we're gonna move away from being an industrial city altogether, but just kind of modernize the industrial portion of the city.
Sure, that's a great point. And. There's examples out there of some. Great looking industrial areas with beautiful landscaping that can be real assets to communities.
Councilmember Wario.
Mayor, a specific project is getting Irondale. Complete. I think we've been working on it long enough and we've set money aside, but you know, Rosemary and 88. You know, they're in design or whatever, but I think in the next 10 to 20 years that. Irondale area, there's some streets that are not even paved still. You know, so I think Irondale is a specific project that I like to see to make it a better place. Also, we work on it every year is the flyovers either on 120th or 104th. You know, the trains keep being. An issue for our city and will continue to be an issue until we either. Get enough funding with the collaboration of our partners, other cities for 104th or 120th. So those. I think the 10 to 20 year mark, those those two come to mind right now. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And those are a flyover. That's the kind of project that you really need to. Think long term for. Those are costly projects.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Derby has been an important. An important area to me, too. I hear that from a lot of council members and it's unfortunate that we haven't been able to gain traction there yet, but I think it has a lot of potential and. And I think we already kind of have the structure of what looks like an old town. Or, you know, the beginnings of a Laramore Square. I think somebody commented that that was kind of the look and feel that they wanted. It's it's there, the bones are there and we we. Need to just get traction and start, you know, advertising for that part of the city and. Starting to, you know, look for establishments that want to be there. And I think you even have the opportunity to, you know, there's part of that street there. I think it's 72nd. That's a great spot for food trucks. It it's already there. We need to put. We need to put the plans together to make it happen. And and some of that is bringing in new establishments. Some of it sounds like. We just want to have the opportunity to do something like bring in a live band or a food truck or a group of food trucks and start. Building that community around. A place for people to go from both the North Range and the Core City. And it exists already. We just need to put the plans together.
Yeah, that that's a great point, too. The good bones of the traditional street grid. That can't be discounted when you're thinking about. That traditional downtown, there's there's, you just have to look at an aerial to see that some of those things exist already in in that area for sure.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I definitely would leave with transportation. And for a lot of different reasons, you know, one of the things that I hear a lot of people talking about are town centers, our district. Fully agree. One thing that I think both sides of the city, if we're if we're separating the two, have to look at is is. At least in my world, what we call walkability score, your ability to to do. Errands, things like that from walking, maybe not just walking, riding bikes, but that goes into connecting trails that goes into. You know. Not having a full-on reliance of of, you know, cars. So whether that's a combination of different types of. Multi-modal transport options, even scooters and bikes, whatever the case may be, is if your walkability score goes up higher and higher. You know, that that sense of community and that feeling of pride in your community. Starts to come with it, I too, I think. And I think the face lift that. People are talking about would come with that is, you know, more people outside with the ability to to go from place to place is always going to be a good thing for us. And and not always focus on. Expanding from a landmass standpoint, if you will. I think sports fields, you know, we have some great sports fields. I I no discounts to that whatsoever, but. I know people that in the North Range go play softball in Brighton because it's closer. It's just easier to do after work or whatever the case may be after they pick up their kids. And so finding a way, you know, centrally, I think, you know, combining teams. That that's one way to start driving our community together. If you're out there playing softball together or volleyball or basketball, whatever the case may be, I think recreation. Is one of the focuses that we should continue to have on how we're going to bring our community together from the North and the South. Not, you know, not everybody can't can recreate in the same way, but if there's options out there, that's a great opportunity to find people who have like. Hobbies as you and a great way to connect with your community. So I touched on trail connection, but in the I and L update in the downtown, I think, you know, investing like we've talked about over and over again into Light Rail Station in that. Area really would show, you know, our ability. To keep a viable. Train location, which would only help us in the future if we were trying to secure a second location on a separate rail spur, like we were talking about. But being involved in Airport Tropolis and the development around DIA, I heard Commissioner Douglas mention aerospace. You know, when we talk about. In the past, E470 and Tower Row were were considered as potential to be the next tech. Industry build out here in in Colorado. I think there's still a chance there, but I think the tech that. Has potential to focus there could be attached to the aerospace. I mean. I think there's still a lot of work to be done on the spaceport just east of the airport. But when you start thinking about Space Force and 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 I know in great detail the amount of. Aerospace work that's already done in Colorado, because I I permit their loads to move in and out of the the terminals. One of the toughest things out of any. Any of those operations is being able to move and having a place to 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 move that stuff to. And so I think. We fit that mold and adapting to the future of transporting those types of good, which is. With of goods, which is a huge economic development opportunity. Obviously, space exploration is is quickly become. A significant role in our future. And so. I I think there's opportunity there. And so I just think, again, thinking outside the box, we obviously don't own any of the land around the spaceport. But having the appropriate transportation connectors could be could play a key role in that as well. Because the purchase of the land right there at the spaceport could get pricey in the future and we could be that alternate where. We're a great location and have great transportation opportunities to both DIA and the spaceport.
Councilmember Smith.
So I think like Councilman Wario said, a cultural center, that would be amazing where we could have people come and do plays and not have to go to other towns to. To see those and that would be really cool. But I think to. Incentivize a cultural center, we have to change our image and part of changing our image is doing it like a adopt a highway program. Like, I don't know if you guys have driven down Highway 2 or Highway 85 recently. There's a lot of trash there, but there's also a lot of businesses who want to do. The adopt a highway so they can help help out with the city, kind of help their city as well. And then. That would be it for me.
Councilmember Noble.
We do have a a great opportunity to, for anyone who's familiar with Richard Florida and the creative class. When you bring in artists or you. Support artists, it does a tremendous amount for our community. And that's exactly what happened to the Rhino area in Denver, for example. And of course. Folks who started that, the artists who started that are getting priced out now. So we. We could invite them to Commerce City, most certainly, and particularly in the area we're talking about, whether it's Derby. Or over by the Light Rail Station. Keep in mind that there remains a building over there that may be potentially for sale that could be a cultural center. It's 11,000 square feet. Just throwing that out there. And. I do. Agree with everything else that has been said. Yes, clean highway too, great idea. Councilmember Smith, thank you.
Mr. Popio.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, to build on for the infrastructure, we've talked a lot a lot about water, we talked a lot about sewer, but there's also a huge component from the technology side of it. Right? I I think our plaster plan needs to address what those concerns are going to be. Is it 5G? Is it what other infrastructure are we going to have in place? As a city in order to offer it. So. I know as you work in a development, you're trying to attract businesses, those have to be addressed and. That's something that could change within the next five years, 10 years, 15 years. It's ever adapting, but we have to have the flexibility and infrastructure. Built in place. So what those next technologies is something that we should review as a team. And then just to build, I know we've talked a lot about kind of that tower and E470 corridor. I don't feel like we have a great. Plan in our previous plan of what we're doing along E470. Along our eastern border. I think that's something we should get aligned in as a group of what that wants to be. We've seen. Proposals come across our desk that have come to you all. Has some housing, but it doesn't feel like it's wrapped up into a bigger vision. I think we need a vision of that eastern border of our city.
And I like I like that you mentioned. Broadband in your list of infrastructure, really important. We're all. We're all using it right now. So. The rise of the Zoom town, being able to do your work from anywhere and then go out and experience your. Your community and. Yeah, I think I think you're absolutely right about the way that infrastructure needs are. Critical and they're also shifting. So appreciate that.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just thinking also about Dick's Sporting Goods Field and what a diamond in the rough that could be for the core part of the city, not just for. Sporting, which is already used for, you know, soccer. But I'm thinking it goes unused a lot and it's a kind of a. It's a concert venue and it's not being used that way, right? And that's that's a great way to attract people to an area that they maybe wouldn't otherwise go. So I don't know if there's a way to partner with. You know, with Cronky and the city to work towards bringing more concerts in there. I know we we do have the Phish concert in the summer. But that's really the only one, right? And so it seems like that'd be a great way to start. An image transition, get people here so they can see what we have. And and we do have the opportunity to put cultural things out there. Like a music venue. We it it already lives in our city. It's already built. We just need to use it. And so I think, you know, it's important. Not only to have these ideas to build new things, but also to make sure that we're using the things that already exist and and kind of maximizing what we have. In place. So I'd like to see us look into how we partner with with Cronky to to start using Dick's Sporting Good Field as a concert venue.
Yeah, great idea. What an asset that you have there. Absolutely. Stadia that can be used for more than one thing or more resilient in the long term. So it's a great point.
Any other questions or comments from council or the commission? Councilmember Noble.
Thanks again. You know, Councilmember Grimes, it's a great idea, but I also, it reminds me of something else is that in terms of planning. That we need to be thinking about the kind of uses that we put together that that are that border each other. So. For example, Dick's Sporting Goods now has homes across the street from it in in the Stapleton area, of course. And I know that some neighbors who live just down the road on across Quebec. Can definitely hear the Phish concert during during the week that it plays and are happy when that week is over with. So. It's something that we need to think about as we move forward is is perhaps our our. Planning and the development has been kind of loosey goosey and everything is called the planned unit development and everything just kind of goes everywhere. So we need to be very conscientious about making areas where. These things can coexist. You know, you can have the ballpark area downtown and have. The baseball field and that's absolutely perfect, of course, but. At the same time, would it be good for a concert area every night? We can use Dick's. We can use Dick's Sporting Goods for something, though. That would really be terrific. So I I appreciate that, and it does give us the opportunity to think of. Of other things we might need to do with regards to uh the kind of planning that we're doing.
Mr. Douglas.
Uh, thank you. Uh, in the northern area, just wanted to add that. And our growth boundary is the north portion of the airport in the eastern side of the airport as well. And maybe starting start to annex uh those portions so it doesn't stay in the county and for our future growth. That way, we're ahead of the curb. And then um also rekindling the relationship with Cronky. Uh, it's been an on and off uh issue with them over the years, and I know they want to restart the tip clock. But that's going to be uh current council now to rekindle that relationship because. It has been a thorn in her side when it comes to nothing being uh built on that property. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any of the council members or commissioners? Mr. Kamek.
Yes, I've uh I've been uh part of these kinds of committees uh. Three times before the last one was ten years ago for Commerce City. And one of the one of the big issues that I think we failed, like Mr. Propio said. It it gave us a direction, it gave us a goal, but it didn't uh outline the roadmap to get there. And most of these things take money. And most of the money is generated either through taxes on residential properties or through businesses. And the point is. If we don't have businesses, if we don't have jobs in the northern range, then it will continue to be a bedroom unity forever. And ever and ever. So if I was uh mayor or god for a day and the council moved to uh, where was it? Greece? I would I would get on the economic development bandwagon and bring consultants in. Uh, hire enough people to do the best job in the front range, because if we don't, there's other people that are competing for the same. Uh, growth pieces that we are, and they're doing a better job right now. And if we don't have jobs up in the front range, then all these things are dreams, not probably realities.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please move on, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so. You all are here because you uh believe in Commerce City. Um, obviously going above and beyond the. Uh, call of an average resident to be a council member or a uh planning commissioner. So um, you know, and I, just like John was saying, if we were uh out with a group of residents, we would say, here's your rapid fire round, just. Uh, shout it out, but we probably don't want to do that on a Zoom, but um. What are some of the top assets and strengths of the community? What makes you love Commerce City, stay in Commerce City, invest in Commerce City? Why do you? Why uh did you buy a home here? Uh, start a business here? What are the top assets and strengths uh that make Commerce City what it is today?
Councilmember Noble.
Uh, I love the diversity in Commerce City. That's it's a huge attraction. So that part is really wonderful. I loved uh when we when we bought in this area, it was um the beauty. Of the northern area, so I would really, really like to see uh that occur in the south as well, but. And of course, it's a really friendly community and takes care of everyone too here, family oriented.
Mr. Yost.
I bought my home up here because I saw opportunity. For Commerce City to grow. And I've been witnessing that for the last fifteen years. And my commitment is that we continue on that same plane. For the next fifty years.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've done a couple. I'd say our people, our diversity, our potential and our location are three things that we can continue to use as foundational. Uh, moving points forward. And one of the things that I think um. Councilwoman Frank, Councilwoman Smith, and Councilman Guardiola can really um attest to is we did a a bunch of interviews for boards and commissions, and we have. Such a diversity in culture and experience. I mean, we have a fantastic. Variety of 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 folks that live in our community that can fill an incredible amount of roles in the professional world. Um, and have a ton of experience in doing so. I I'm and I'm dead serious. Every every interview we did. It was like one after another was super successful. I would have hired every single one of them. And so, you know, it is um. It is a great community that, you know, someone says a diamond in the rough, we have a but but our potential. Um. And and it's our time. I mean, really, we talk about a lot of things um regionally. It's our time. I mean, we waited in line or we've gotten. Um, little brothered or shouldered out of a lot of discussions in the past for whatever reason, you know, maybe it wasn't our time then, but it is now. And and I think that's what's most exciting about our potential over the next ten to twenty-five years is. We have a leg to stand on now. We're growing, and we we are a place that regionally will get uh attention and continue to grow as long as we. Um, keep fighting for it and keeping that path.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And well, I've been in Commerce City all my life, so I think, you know, some of the greatest assets is seeing the growth up in the north, plus the continuous growth. And development in the south. And so I think it's really great also that we have affordable housing still compared to a lot of other communities. And we are a prime location for a lot of residents. Um, you know, we're centrally located. You can get to Denver, a lot of other cities. Within fifteen to twenty minutes. So, you know, I I just love being in Commerce City and watching the growth and especially witnessing. The development up up in in the north, um, because when I grew up, that was just vacant land. So watching all of that being. Developed, I contribute that to all the previous mayors and city council of Commerce City, because. That used to be where I learnt how to drive a car, and now seeing that development is amazing.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I like that comment, Councilmember Ellen Thomas. It's where you learn to drive a car. Uh, anyway. Uh, I I would say most of what I was going to say has already been covered. Diversity is huge, and I think it's what attracts a lot of us to Commerce City. Uh, also, we have room to grow. Not only are we growing now in the northern range, but we have. Land to continue growing on, and and if we, you know, work together, we can, we can really maximize that acreage to be um good for the whole city. And uh. Yeah, I think those were kind of my two main points, acreage to grow and the diversity of the community.
Councilmember Muriel.
Mayor, um, you know, I think one of the things that always attracted us here, and we've been here since the early eighties, is the small town feel. And I think we still have it. A lot of the folks that I grew up with just moved down Highway two or I seventy-six to hundred and fourth, hundred and twelfth, hundred and twentieth. Um, but they're still in the city uh in Commerce City. So I I I still see that um, the also the potential that Commerce City has. We've lived, a lot of us that have been here for a long, long time have lived through the the bad reputation that Commerce City has had. And, you know, we talked about the reimaging. And um, when you ask this question, that's one thing that I thought, how could I help as a as a resident since nineteen eighty-three help reimagine my city because I know what. Our city really is. It's not what folks um, you know, say or put on social media, really isn't. Um, and I think we could do a better job of that, and and I think we're getting there, but the potential that Commerce City has to be a great city. Uh, for a lot of working class cities, uh working class residents and the middle class. And uh. So um, those are a couple of things. Um, you know, the diversity, uh, we do have tons of great diversity. But we still have a long ways to go on how we support everyone in our city. Um, being a city that's fifty percent Latino. Um, and with that fifty percent, a lot of undocumented folks that are our neighbors and live in the city still don't feel supported. So. With diversity, I think we have to go uh an extra step um for all our residents. Um, but it's been a great city to me and my family. Um, and will continue for hopefully my son.
Mr. Douglas.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I say number one for us, we moved up here was the feeling of of community. And it being also um a diverse city. Um, this is a great place to raise your family. We have a great opportunity because it's a clean slate right now to make Commerce City what what the citizens. Would want it to be in the future. Um, we can't think now because we're short sighted, so it has to be something that's. Planned out for seven generations. Commerce City has great bones. And it'd be nice uh to to see as far economic development and with the economy that Commerce City will be one of the top ten uh. Cities to raise your family. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. I knew I had one more. Um, you know, and the more we grow, this may not be the case, but anyone who's had to commute to downtown. Knows that I seventy-six is the last good commute from the from the suburbs to downtown. And so. Um, I think that's a huge asset, but as I said, as we grow, maybe that isn't isn't the case anymore. But right now, excellent commute.
Any other questions or comments from council members or commissioners? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, once again, uh, I heard some of you touch on this already. Uh, some of you were here for the previous comprehensive planning process. One thing we like to hear, especially from elected and appointed officials like yourselves. Uh, how has the current comprehensive plan affected your decision-making process, if at all? Um, and what did you always think could be improved about it? So um, I know we're getting a little past our time here. Uh, something something to think about and um. Any anybody have any takes on this?
Mr. Douglas.
Uh, thank you. I could say being a two thousand ten com- comprehensive um participant. Would be the fact that we did take advantage of the expansion on Highway two, Tower Road. Um, bringing a recreational center in the north, uh, water park in the south. And being bringing parity within our city, so everyone is uh included. So um, there's. That two thousand and comprehensive plan has has been great, and it does have tech. Um, and with it, and um if we could, you know, I think, study that and actually use that as a a template, I think a lot of. Uh, our members right now could see that uh it is a gateway to D I A corridor. Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna say a a lot similar to that. I think. The ten-year comprehensive plan from two thousand and ten. Made some significant changes in our city that lay the groundwork for our future, and I think uh Commissioner Douglas highlighted those as well, the. Highway two and and, you know, we we heard about the speed limit and and there's reasons why the speed limits like that, but it it should improve safety there. Tower Road, same thing. Um, those are huge north to south um improvements for our city that that really um go hand in hand with that improved commute. Um, obviously, I seventy-six, there's some improvements there that that will be needed as that whole quarter grows, but. That really lays some good foundational work for us to um. To continue to grow or have the ability to talk about these discussions with growth, because, you know, the last thing we want to do is be. Um, too many steps behind the ball in transportation and really. You know, that's it's tough to stay ahead of that just because of funding and the cost of transportation projects. But in all reality, the goal is to go just not get too far behind and, you know, and and try to find ways where development um keeps up with. Development of transportation system keeps up with the development of the city um and and funds that. And so to me. You know, that that that's one of the key things that I think it's done for us is helped us shape the vision of our future. Um, by completing some of these really significant um projects and tasks in the last, you know, ten year cycle. And and I don't want to discount the recreation centers, both the new one and the upgrades to the old one, because we we talk about. Um, community and, you know, bringing folks together, and you'll hear me, you know, always talk about recreation as one of the finest ways to do so. So. I don't want to discount the old plan, but I think moving forward, what I would request is that we keep it front and center in our in our um discussion, especially every year, kind of refer back to it during budget creation season, because. I think if we keep it as the 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 guiding light, the North Star, or whatever you want to call it, um, as we move forward is the. We're going to put a ton of effort into this plan, and so we really need to highlight it on an annual basis to kind of center ourselves back to that long-term vision. Because a lot of times we are focused on what's here and now, and um it's easy to forget about what those future plans are. And so. Um, and and I'm guilty of that for sure, and that's why I'm bringing that up. It's just, you know, it can really help guide us on an annual basis if we put the appropriate thought and effort into this.
Mr. Kamek.
Yeah, and I think you uh you hit the nail on the head, uh, Mr. Hearst, on uh the review. Uh, we actually talked, and I think uh. Steve Douglas would uh attest to this. We talked about having a every, I think it's either three-year or five-year review of that, and uh frankly, it it didn't happen for whatever reason, but. It's important to have the comprehensive plan, not only say what the dream is, but how to get there. And I feel the last one didn't do that as well. And you know, we need to, you know, have a stronger relationship with site selectors. We need to have a stronger relationship with. Uh, people that bring the money into our community, you know, jobs and and uh, you know, major uh industry players. So that w- we generate the kinds of funds that we can do all of these things, because if we don't have the. The balanced community of jobs and recreation and health and and uh rooftops, then. You you know, all these things are difficult to do just on the backs of the task of the tax uh dollar.
Councilmember Muriel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, um, I think uh more uh. Uh, you know, check-ins and making it more public, something that they can improve. Um, I've asked residents if they knew we had a comp plan before, and they had no clue. Um, and so I think uh with this new one is how do we make it very transparent for all our residents and keep it up to date? Um, and and like Councilman Hur said and Mr. Kamek, you know, we we really need the the roadmap to hit those my the markers. Um, for uh, you know, um, if I wasn't on council, I wouldn't know that the comp plan helped the uh the two K programs, right? People don't know that. You know, people don't know. They just thought um it's something that City Council chose, and and City Council had a. Uh, a say in it, but, you know, this comes from the comp plan. So I think uh hitting. Highlighting projects, highlighting specific areas that have been completed. And keep up with the steps and being again very promoting it to our public. Our our residents need to keep seeing this, not just when. Uh, it comes up every eleven or ten years. Thanks.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you. Yeah, we'd a Reader's Digest version would be really helpful to everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, we'd, a Reader's Digest version would be really helpful to everyone. If, if there would be a great summary, these comprehensive plans become massive. And so all of those details then outweigh all of the great points that are made. So hopefully we'll have something that we can work with. I do regret that the uh, one section from the comprehensive plan of two thousand ten that wasn't implemented was the greenhouse gases, lowering greenhouse gases. And I think if Commerce City had taken strides towards accomplishing that goal in the comprehensive plan, we'd be far ahead of the game right now in terms of uh, many things impacting this community.
Mr. Omador.
Thank you. Um, I would just say that the, the comp plan is a living document and it, it's millable and living all the time. I would just hope that, you know, the city staff is staying in tune with the CDOT projects that are out there and what is being funded there and having the input um, on the front end to be able to uh, speak for our community along with what's happening in terms of infrastructure for uh, Eritropolis and what's happening in the northern range to loop the water systems out there. Um, so the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, just needs to really be uh, in tuned with staff and then staff recommending and at least having the communication with our city council that is in place, whoever that may be. And along with, you know, the, the CDOT, the water, the infrastructure to capture opportunities with our developers. Because we talk about uh, hey, there's a, a metro district that's coming along, but the city is funding some of this stuff as well to make sure that the infrastructure and development happens. So that's kind of my two cents is that stay in tune with what um, other authorities have in jurisdiction over transportation, water, et cetera. And our developers. Thank you.
Mr. Ingram.
I think one thing with the new plan that could, you know, help, especially with the reviews is if, you know, during the development of it, if there's, you know, call it, you know, five strategic projects that you'd like to do and they're, you know, over a range of uh, time periods that you put a, you know, anticipated date of, you know, when that should be completed. You know, you can go with low hanging fruit for like a one-year deal, you know, go with a three-year project. You know, say, say the five-year project is a flyover on Hundred and Fourth. And then that way, as you go through the twenty-five years, you can see, hey, we've, you know, accomplished some of these things and we're on track or we're behind the eight ball. Because, you know, we wouldn't want to get twenty years from now and we have five years left to, you know, do most of the things that we were planning to do. And then, you know, it doesn't have to be the full, you know, full-on list, but if you come up with just a, a few strategic ones that you can get done and call that successful for the plan, I think it'd be good to list those out and give it a anticipated timeframe. Absolutely.
Any other comments from council or commissioners? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so briefly, the, the next thing I want to uh, just touch base on before we go is um, how we're already starting to get people in, involved. We've already uh, rolled out the project website. Um, best way to access it is right through the city's existing website, C three gov slash comp plan. Um, and the website really is going to be the hub for um, online participation, reading, uh, draft document components as they uh, run through the process of um, being reviewed by staff and posted to the website. Uh, whether it's uh, summaries of community outreach or um, draft components that the various working groups have already reviewed. Um, there's an online community questionnaire available in Spanish and in English that's already uh, live on the website. Um, and then map dot social, which is an interactive issues and opportunities mapping tool, easy to use, fun to use. Um, so real quick, uh, what we're going to do now is have Mika do a screen share and quickly show you how um, easy it is to use the website and to interact with map dot social.
Great. Thanks, Josh. Okay, I'm going to pull up my screen right now. So I just want to make sure before I start, can everyone hear me and can everyone see my screen? Good? Okay, great. Awesome. So um, within Commerce City's website, um, there's a landing page for specifically the comprehensive plan. Um, and if you go here, I'm going to run through this very quickly because I know we're running a little bit late. This link right here will bring you to um, Commerce City twenty forty-five project website. Um, and here you can get more information about the plan as well as access to um, how to get involved. So updates on meetings, um, the community questionnaire right here, as well as map dot social. So I'm going to give a quick run-through of map dot social. And this is a really fun and engaging um, online mapping tool that can be used by anyone. Um, if you go to this page, there is a button to watch tutorial. Um, but you can also go directly to the project's map dot social website. Um, and here we are, and there's a quick welcome with instructions listed right here. We also have it um, provided in Spanish. Um, and all you have to do is you have to click the upper right here or actually the orange button to create your map. And it's going to prompt you to log in, um, just simply create an email, um, putting your email and password. You can log in with Facebook as well. Um, I already have an account, so I'm going to click sign in. And this is just to make sure that you can go back to your map later on um, and revise it if you would like to and add to it. Um, so you just have to click the orange button here. Create a title. And you can add a description as well if you like and hit create. And a blank map is going to pop up. Um, and the only layer that's showing right here is the city's boundary. Um, and right here on the upper right-hand side, you have the legend items. And so these are different kinds of points that you can place and populate your map with. So you have community assets, development priority sites, problematic intersections and so on. Um, you also have the option to toggle between different base maps. So let's say you want to see rather an aerial of the city to know where you're looking at, because sometimes it's hard when you're just looking at um, such a base map. So you can go to world imagery with labels, for example, and then you can zoom in to a specific area. Um, and there's two ways to place a point on the map. You can either go to the legend and press the plus point, um, or you can just click and then select what type of um, point you would like to place. So for example, um, if I want to highlight a development priority area, um, near Victory Crossing, I could click and then double-click here. And then you just have to type in a title. So let's say develop this area. This area for um, new restaurants, for example. And you also have the ability to provide a link. For example, if you were um, talking about a library or a park, for example, you can provide um, the website for that location. And you can also upload a photo. Let's say you went to the site and you took a photo of the area. You can include that with your comment as well. And all you have to do is press submit and then your point is created. Um, and people can see your point as um, they view the community's map gallery, and I can show you that in a bit. Um, and they can come over and thumbs up your comment or thumbs down if they agree or disagree. And so as you populate here, you can click another point and put community assets. People can put tens and hundreds of points on their maps and it's a really great, easy tool to use and um, kind of gain from all over uh, the community, what people think and what people like about the community, certain areas they want to see developed, certain uses, um, they want to see redeveloped, for example. Um, and then we can geocode this data and um, analyze it in one collective map um, after we collect everyone's responses. So it's a really great tool. Um, I would recommend to share with everyone, even friends, family, whoever lives in the area, um, because we really want to gain as much input as possible through this mapping tool. Um, and to see everyone's um, map, uh, see everyone's maps, you can just go to the map gallery. And then here it says all features and view map. Or you can um, organize each map by the category. So if you click the view map button underneath community assets, it'll show everyone's um, points of community assets um, from all the responses that we've received. Um, and this one will bring us to everyone's. So here we can see um, points that people have already entered into map dot social. Um, one more thing I just wanted to point out, if you ever are confused or would like to watch a tutorial, um, we have the tutorial posted on the project website. Or you can come here and press the help button at the top right corner and it'll give you a full-on walkthrough of how to use it. So highly recommend and I hope you guys all check it out. Thank you.
With that, I'd like to jump in real quick and just request that we think this is a great tool and we would strongly encourage, maybe even challenge our council members and our commissioners to please go online to this website and create a map so that the rest of our community members see that we're committed to this project and engaged and encourage them to take it seriously and participate in this tool as well. Thanks.
Mr. Yost.
Can we get a link to the, the, the website?
Yes.
I was, sorry, Mika, go ahead.
Yes, um, we can definitely send out a link afterwards or I can um, maybe share it through a chat here if possible. Yes, we can definitely get that link over to you.
Yeah, and the easiest, easiest way to remember it is just um, easiest way to get to it rather than trying to remember the uh, the direct link to map dot social is C three gov slash comp plan. And that, that landing page will uh, connect you through to all of these things that we just showed you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kamek.
You bet. I'd like to see the areas above the uh, on the north part of the airport shown as a uh, future part of Commerce City. Uh, people with ideas just might come up with some great ideas for that, knowing that that is available to us, number one. Number two, we've got a lot of uh, current plans that are progressing, uh, such as the uh, uh, the numerous developments that are, you know, in the process of being um, you know, getting their uh, plans together. And especially the um, campus that uh, Oakwood is planning up there with uh, the ball fields and the uh, charter school and so on. You know, that should be shown so that people know kind of what's imminent and coming, so that they can work around that. I, I just think that would be a great addition to the map.
Yeah, that's a great point. One thing to, to consider is that there's no, um, even though the municipal boundary is on the map, there's no actual constraint to having to drop points within, inside the municipal boundary. You can, you can draw outside the lines. Um, but we, we can discuss with staff if we need to include uh, any of the growth boundaries or anything like that on there. That's something we can turn on.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please proceed.
That's pretty much, uh, we're bringing it to the next steps here. Um, what we're going to be doing next is working with staff to continue uh, publicizing the website and the outreach platforms. Um, just like Jenny said, uh, take, take the questionnaire, uh, mention it to your neighbor or your family member. Um, use the map dot social tool and uh, working with uh, you all and with the uh, various advisory committees and groups. That's how the word starts to get out. So uh, the more participation, the better. Um, and then we're starting to plan the community workshop series. There'll be a series of four community workshops um, as part of the first phase of the project. The uh, issues and opportunities and existing conditions. Uh, so those workshops are going to be focused on some of the same things that we talked about tonight. Uh, wh- issues and opportunities in Commerce City, strengths and assets. And um, uh, it's part of the gathering information phase that we're in right now. Uh, and then the first interim deliverable for the process will be the existing conditions analysis report. Uh, that's coming up in a few months. Um, and that's really a snapshot of where Commerce City is today. It's not an adopted document. It's uh, basically our uh, preliminary understanding of Commerce City. Um, making sure that, you know, on the uh, side of the project, our side where we're writing the, the plan, that we have our heads on straight and that we know the city before we get into writing uh, recommendations and policy for Commerce City. So those are the next three steps. I really appreciate the opportunity and the, the time that you all gave us to come and speak with you tonight. I can't tell you how valuable it is to hear from uh, the decision makers in the city at the outset of the process and also to have such good feedback and conversation to uh, hear about your city. So um, this is extremely helpful for us as we kick off the process and uh, we really appreciate it. We're really excited to be working with Commerce City. Um, it's a, it's an amazing city and like John said at the beginning, really hope that sometime in the very near future that we're out there with you in person. So um, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. I thank you very much for your time. I believe Councilmember Graham, just one more comment before we change subject.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for being here and being a part of this discussion. It was really dynamic and great to kind of roundtable with everybody. And um, special thanks to Planning Commission for joining us tonight.
Thank you, and I agree. I think, thank you very much for your time this evening. Look forward as this process moves forward. Thank you, Planning Commission, for taking time out of your evening to be here with us and ask questions and give your feedback as well. Next on the agenda is the large track weed management follow-up. Will Tricia Mason, Community Development Manager, and Mike Brown, Public Works Deputy Director of Operations, please make the presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, thank you once again for hearing the updates regarding the weed regulations um, and the fine sections of the municipal code. Um, Dylan, could you please start the presentation? Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, in two thousand nineteen, just a quick recap. Um, we had two study sessions during those study sessions. We presented um, what we had hoped to achieve by updating the weed regulations. Those updates were, we wanted to achieve better consistency, provide clarity of responsibility, and discuss the difference between public and private maintenance. From those study sessions, council provided input, which was to have a consistent regulations for large tract owners, um, increased violation fees, continued community education, and increased enforcement. To do that, um, staff needed to amend section six dash twenty twelve and section three dash twenty-three oh four. Next slide, please. Staff presented ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight, which incorporated council's input. Um, after hearing that uh, council, um, or after council's review, um, along with consideration of additional public comment, um, a motion was made to include an exception for agricultural properties, which it would exclude them from maintaining the adjacent right-of-way due to safety concerns. Next slide, please. On June sixth, staff again presented ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight to include the exception for land that is being actively farmed from the responsibility to maintain or mow um, adjacent right-of-way. Um, it was at that time, um, in a separate presentation, Public Works highlighted their mowing and operations for uh, public property. Um, from the Public Works presentation, council wanted to better understand that presentation and requested that we have another study session. Next slide, please. So that brings us to today. So today, um, for me, my goal is to clarify the direction and intent um, specific to community development that was started back in two thousand nineteen, which was to achieve a consistent look, which was um, done by simplifying the complex tier system that we once had. So we reduced a three-tier system with several variables to a two-tier system, um, specific to property types and um, to an either-or acreage. We also changed the allowable growth height from three lengths to two. So there is an eight-inch height for developed and undeveloped lots, less than one acre, and then sixteen inches for undeveloped lots, larger than an acre, um, except with an adjacent public right-of-way, which remained at eight inches. The updates provided clear language for residents and staff to understand maintenance responsibility. We did that by defining what extended property was, which was the land that was adjacent to the public right of way. We removed maintenance to center line of the road, meaning extended property shall include only that portion up to road's edge. We also added an agricultural, agricultural exception due to safety, land that is actively being farmed, which totals about seven miles in Commerce City, is excluded from extended property maintenance of section six dash 2012. We created a fee structure that was specific to nuisance weed regulations. So we changed it and escalated the fines to encourage compliance. We continue to have outreach and community awareness. We do that through the HOAs, through our city's website outreach, mailed notices. And then finally, from council suggestion on enforcement, we will be reducing the length of compliance as well as increased enforcement during wet or high growth months. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that those four goals still align with your visions of what we were supposed to accomplish with the updates as it related to those sections of the code.
Any questions or comments from council regarding this? Seeing none, please proceed.
So Mike will have the second presentation from Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Again, I'm Mike Brown. I'm the Deputy Director of Operations for Public Works. And again, I'll be sharing with you this evening with the impacts to the public works right away and open space maintenance costs and practices would be as a result of this proposed ordinance or these revisions to the ordinance. Go ahead, Dylan. So just a little bit of background, currently where we're at and what exactly the mileage that we would be talking about in relationship to how these new ordinances would apply with the ordinance, I should say. So currently, we're maintaining approximately 82.2 miles of right of way. And the new ordinance, as it's currently written, it would reduce that to roughly 49.5 miles. If you apply then the ag exception, that's part of this proposed ordinance, it would add an additional just under seven miles or 6.9 miles. Then ultimately resulting in 56.4 miles of lay miles of responsibility for the Public Works Division to maintain. Additionally, lastly, there on the slide, it indicates that the new ordinance would transfer the maintenance responsibility to some adjacent property owners. Again, those approximately 32.7 miles that would be reduced from the city's responsibility. Go ahead, Dylan, please. So this map generally depicts the, the green is going to be the areas that we would continue to maintain, currently maintain, would continue to maintain. The yellow road line segments are going to be that additional 6.9 miles that the ag exception would add to the city's responsibility that we're currently not doing. And then the red is representative of those 32.7 miles that would be transferred to the adjacent property owner as a result of the new ordinance. And again, I would note that the vast majority of that is in the northern range and adjacent to future development parcels. We do have a little bit in Irondale and down, then also in the, the southern part of the city, along some of those larger industrial lots and areas. So it's essentially a representation of those three things, what we would continue to maintain, what would be turned over to the adjacent property owner, and then the addition that we would also continue to maintain. So we would maintain the yellow and the green. Go ahead, Dylan, please. So back to talking about our current operations. So again, right now, we're maintaining 82.2 miles of road right of way. And our current practice is to do a 24-foot wide swath, or essentially in most, along most rights, we, we do two passes with the mower essentially. They may, they may be two 12 feet wide, could be 12 feet and 10 feet. All of our right of ways vary along throughout the entire city. The exact distance between the edge of the pavement and the adjacent right of way line or property line can vary. But in most instances, we do two passes, and we do it three, approximately three times a year through the growing season. And in-house, we perform that work currently. It costs about $114,000 a year, and that includes the O and M only. That would be the staff time as well as the fuel and equipment maintenance. The proposed ordinance with the ag exception would then, we would be down to the 56.2 miles. But the new ordinance would require us to mow from the edge of the street all the way to the adjacent property line. So in many instances of the right sway that, that we would maintain, we would have to do an additional pass on top of the two that we're currently doing to mow all the way to the, the property line. In addition to that, we would be increasing the number of mowings of three per, per year on average to seven, potentially more, depending upon the growth rate of the vegetation in those ranks of way. So in-house, for us to perform that additional work as, as a result of the, the ordinance, it would be $125,000 a year. That would include roughly 13.5,000 for that ag exception or those additional seven miles that are being added as a result of the proposed ordinance change. I mean, it would however, require almost $600,000 in capital equipment costs along with the associated operations and maintenance of fuel and maintenance of the equipment and, and the staff to do that. So again, the city taking on this additional work would, would require again, a significant amount of capital investment upfront for us to be able to do that. If we were to look at an alternative, specifically having a contractor perform that work for us, it would be roughly $178,000 a year for the contractor to, to perform that work, and that would include roughly that 19.2,000 for, again, the ag exception that, that's added to our mileage. Again, though, there would be no additional capital cost required. The, the contractor is going to pay the staff, the contractor is going to take care of the equipment, the fuel, and they're going to provide that equipment. So the contractor option, of course, would not require that, that large upfront expenditure for, for the capital equipment. Go ahead, Dylan, please. So moving forward, if, if the city were to make a decision, or the city council were to make a decision for the city to retain the responsibility for those 32.7 miles of right of way that the new ordinance would turn over to the adjacent property owners, again, most of those being those large tracks in the northern range adjacent to future development parcels and a little bit down in the southern part of the industrial area in the city. And then a little bit there actually was a little bit that would be handed over a crunkie where they owned some parcels there along Highway Two and Quebec Street. Again, in-house, if we were to continue doing that, that 63,000, excuse me, doing those 32 miles, that's 63,000 a year. Again, the only the O and M costs for staff and our equipment and a fuel or equipment maintenance and fuel. But we would have to, in order to perform that work, we would again, have to make an investment in just under $600,000 worth of capital equipment along with those, those O and M costs for the first year. If we were to, again, alternatively have a contractor do that additional work, it would be 90,000 a year. Again, that's just for, that would be them providing the staff, providing the fuel, providing the equipment maintenance and the equipment itself to do the work. So staff's recommendation at this point is to, as the ordinance would require, transfer that 32.7 miles of right of way to the adjacent property owner, again, as, as the proposed ordinance indicates. Okay, Dylan, please. Next slide. So just a rough, just brief, quick summary of what I just went over. So the, the top line there are current processes, which is again, mowing two passes or roughly a 24-foot wide swath three times per year along those 82.2 miles we're currently maintaining. There would be no additional in-house costs, and there would be no need for a contractor if we were to continue with what, what our current practice is. If we applied the proposed ordinance with the ag exception, and we would then again, again, we'd be mowing from the edge of pavement all the way to the property line. And because of the eight-inch growth restriction, we would be doing it an estimated seven mowing times per season as opposed to three. And that would be roughly $125,000 in-house cost and for a contractor, $178,000. Again, that's just the, that's just the staff, equipment, fuel, does not include the capital equipment. Then lastly, as an option would be, the staff suggested alternative would be for the city to continue to just mow the 24-foot wide swath instead of mowing all the way from the edge of payment to the property line. Again, though, if we apply the eight-inch growth restriction, it would still require us to mow that at least seven times per growing season. I would note though, that, that, that in some instances, that, that's going to leave a swath of the right of way between the edge of the road and the property line. That would not be, would not be mowed or, mowed or maintained. So there, there would be an aesthetic consideration there. And again, at the bottom there, I'm just simply noting that in order for us to do that, if we were to do that in-house, there would again be that significant capital equipment cost. Go ahead, Dylan. So again, this, this ordinance also has an impact potentially on the maintenance of our open spaces and our drainage ways. Currently, we have approximately 143 acres worth of mowing that we do, and that's the perimeters or the edges of all of our trails within open space areas and the edges and the fence lines of our open space areas. And you're going to find a lot of those in First Creek, Second Creek, Third Creek, and some of those future park school sites embedded in the neighborhoods. And in-house, for us to do that, it's currently costing us just right around $39,000 for the, for the O and M, which is just the staff and then the fuel and the equipment, maintenance of our existing equipment. The proposed ordinance would require that the 744 acres of open space currently in our inventory, that we would have to mow that and keep it at, at a 16-inch growth height restriction as, as the ordinance requires. And we're estimating we'd likely have to do that four, four times out of the growing season in order to keep it at that, at that 16-inch height. In-house, for us to do that, it would be an additional roughly $59,000 a year, again, for the O and M only. It would require us to buy an additional tractor or piece of equipment for the open space mowing as well as that for the right of way. It would be in addition to that, that would be approximately $130,000 for that, for that piece of equipment. As an alternative, we could have a contractor do that additional mowing. That would be approximately 85,000 a year. And again, that's the contractor covering all those costs, but with no capital equipment cost upfront to purchase additional equipment as the contractor would be providing it. So staff is recommending that we be granted an exemption for city designated open space and drainage ways from the proposed ordinance, and that we would continue to apply the open space practices we're doing now as we move forward. If I get next slide, Dylan, please. The, the previous recommendation on the previous slide is primarily related to the fact that the, our rationale to exempt the city from mowing those right, those open spaces and drainage ways four times a year and keeping it at 16 inches, is that simply that, that will make it very, very difficult for us to go in and revegetate and restore these open spaces that were once fallow farmland or mostly still are, as a matter of fact, very have heavily infested with weeds at this point. Having to mow it and keep it at 16 inches would essentially, essentially make it ineffectual for us to actually go in and restore and try to return it to native grasses. We would need to allow those grasses to grow much taller and go to seed head, drop additional seed into, into the ground. And so mowing frequently and mowing at the wrong times of year, again, trying to keep it at that 16 inches, particularly for mowing when it's dry during the dry part of the season, if we haven't had much rain and it's hot, that will stress, stress that turf. And if it's not, again, not allowed to grow to seed and bolt and drop additional seed, eventually that, that reduces the amount of healthy grass that we, that we would be able to, any that exists, keep it going and or for us to go in and restore and grow any additional grass. Next slide, please. So with that, I would certainly answer any questions that the council may have.
There any councils? Excuse me, are there any questions from council? Councilmember Hurst?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys giving us a recap on, on this, because I know it's been some time since we talked about it last time. I was looking at my notes and I couldn't find it, because of my other notebook, but I was, I was almost sure that we talked about approving the exemption for the open space last time, and I could be wrong, just because I think that in my, in my book is a no-brainer. And the, and the reason to me it seems as a no-brainer is I watched the Second Creek Open Space start the rehab process recently, and I thought it was handled really well this summer from, for my non-expert opinion on that stuff. And so I don't see a need to change specifically those types of open spaces that are kind of looked at a natural landscape more than a green grass field or, you know, an, an ex-farm land that's now been let go and is full of weeds. My personal opinion when we had this discussion in the past was to eliminate the out-of-state landowners from just letting their property go and meeting the bare minimum requirements of the old, you know, weed, weed ordinance and, you know, trying to get back to the pre, what, 2009 or 2010, whatever has changed during the last major recession. I think we can get back to that original intent of, there's, there's a couple of different reasons in my mind that we do this. But first of all, fire protection, you know, eliminating fire hazards, doing our best to control weeds so they don't, you know, push their seeds onto other people's property, and then you have more weed growth. And then finally, do something with the property. We're kind of, this is a back, backend incentivization to start looking for new development on the property if it's just sitting there unutilized or underutilized. And so you would have no opposition from me looking for the exemption on open spaces. And then I, I would also be excited to see, you know, with proper scoping and RFP, what, how, how much the contractors can come down in price if that was an option that council wanted you guys to take a look at. Because to me, I, I get, I get the front end expense, the capital expense to buying equipment, and, and there's some value in there and controlling that. It's kind of controlling your destiny and these types of things. But at the same time, I think, you know, not, not, not trying to hire, you know, bring on more cost with staff and all that other stuff to, to mow this. And sticking to the original intent, I, I want to see if the RFP could drive down those costs and, and create a possible cost savings based off of what we just saw. So not saying that it would come down a ton, but I think once you really get into, to the details of an RSP, you can find some cost savings usually when you're working with, with people competing for the business.
For a note of clarification, the ordinance and the code specifically speaks to private property. So it is, is property owned privately, not publicly?
Councilmember Renewal?
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions. When you're looking at the capital costs for the equipment of, I think it was 589,000, how often do you have, what's the life cycle of that equipment?
That's a good question. We, we did think about that, and our best guess is 12 to 15 years for replacement, which would ultimately would be about the life cycle of it. So if, if we were to make that upfront capital investment in that, in that, about the time we would get a return on our investment would be when we, it would be time to probably replace that equipment or get close to replacing that equipment. So the, the value and the savings certainly isn't going with a contractor, though their, their cost for, for staff and for equipment and fuel is approximately 30% more than what the city's is. And nevertheless, they already have the equipment and the city would not have to make that investment. So the, the cost would be significantly less for the city if, if we were to choose a contract.
Well, the, the upfront cost would be considerably less, but it appears that there's a difference of about 50,000 per year in terms of the city doing it versus a contractor doing it. So over the course of 10 years, that would be $500,000. And if you're looking at 12 to 15, then next thing you know, you have, you're under the 589,000. So I think it would certainly balance out. Yeah. And what about medians? I noticed that on 104th, between Highway Two and Highway 85, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of weeds. Do we take care of that? And is it part of this?
This did not contemplate medians. The, the city is responsible for most, most medians. I do believe that portion of Highway Two that you're, or excuse me, 104th you're speaking about is under C-Got, C-Dot's control currently. That doesn't mean that if, if, if those areas needed to be mowed more, that we couldn't work with C-Dot to go in and supplement or augment what they're doing.
Oh, I think that would be a very good idea, actually, because that is a gateway into Commerce City. So if you can get C-Dot to pick it up on, on keeping that area clean, it would be really helpful. Otherwise, I agree with Councilmember Hurst that natural habitats should be left generally as they are. There is a drainage retention basin behind Landmark Academy that gets very weedy. And when you're talking about dropping seeds, those seeds fly and get into neighbors' yards. So they're always battling weeds in their own, in their own lawns. So would we, what about drainage basins? Who's responsible for drainage basins or retention? Who's responsible for drainage basins or retention basins, whatever the proper term is?
That would depend on the specific retention or detention pond. Some of the city are responsible for, some of the HOA or the Metro District are responsible.
And would this weed ordinance apply to the retention basins that the city is responsible for?
The exemption that we would read that we're requesting from the ordinance would be for the city's open space drain and drainage ways slash retention detention areas.
I would draw the line there then and say that it should only be for. Natural habitats such as Second Creek or First Creek, Third Creek. Those kinds of natural habitats than to leave a drainage basin. With long weeds because that's what we're looking at, not far from my home, and it can be quite messy in the summer. So I would draw the line there. Thanks.
Councilmember Dreams.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Mike. Just curious. About, so you made reference to, you know, cutting too often and, you know, not allowing for the proper reseeding. In these areas where we're eventually going to restore the open spaces. What's the cost consideration? To starting restoration projects or just seeding with some sort of cover crop or native grass versus cutting it? Indefinitely more times per year than maybe you have in the past.
Are you are you referring specifically to the to the open spaces?
Yeah, the open spaces.
I I have Willis Waterhouse with us also this evening. He could look up the cost probably fairly quickly for our most recent restoration efforts in Second Creek. So the the restoration of those areas is a is a multi-year process. It could it can take as many as five years or more to actually achieve. The restoration that you're looking for. So essentially, you go in and you spray for weeds, you have to spray the entire site and you hope to you do. You do a targeted. Herbicide that would kill the weeds, but not the grasses. Once we once we get those under control, we can then go in and mow them down once they're dead, and then we would come back and we would reseed the area. Possibly multiple times. And then through that process, over a number of years of it being allowed to grow tall, old, drop its seed. As grass gets thicker, it tends to choke out the weeds and it it takes us some time to go and and get rid of rid of those weeds. So it. It's not as though we could just get rid of the weeds, go mow down or spray them, and then initially come back and put in a cover crop. It's it's a it's a it's a four or five-year process. At a minimum that truly really get the weeds under control and get a good healthy stand of grass. And you just simply can't do it when when you're cutting it below sixteen inches for, you know, for a minimum of four times a year. Willis, I'm not sure if you have a if you're able to, if you have a rough estimate for the per acre cost for a restoration.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I'm looking for it right now.
And then kind of as a well, follow-up question, but related to large tracts that are owned privately. As opposed to ask or requiring them to be mowed, could we offer an exemption if they would plant a cover crop?
I I. I I don't want to speak for what what the developers may or may not do or what we would require them to do. Again, it would still require the same sort of effort from them. It would have to be an ongoing process to actually get. Because you you may have a cover crop in there, but it's going to have a lot of weed seed in it. You're going to get weeds that pop up everywhere in those parcels. And the, you know, for instance, kosher weed, it can grow six, eight feet tall and it can grow, it can grow two feet in a matter of a week. If there's if there's the temperatures right and the precipitation is right. So getting in one fell swoop, getting rid of all the weeds and then just putting in a cover crop is something that's not. It's it's not easily easily achievable. I would say those parcels, though, again, they're future development parcels. There is an intent to restore them. To native grasses, you know, native prairie grasses. So it's really just a matter of keeping them in in a decent-looking condition until such time that that they develop. And it would it would be it would be more of a cost for them to try to actually get rid of the weeds and just have a cover crop there so that they need the ordinance and don't have tall weeds. And for them to probably just mow it four times a year.
Okay, that that's fair. I was just curious, you know, you see some of these tracks where they just come through and. They kind of till it all down, just like you would see, you know, an ag field and and then plant something else there. And I did see some drill seeding happening on developments up in the Northern Range, kind of off of one hundred and twentieth last summer. Where there's planned development, but it's not for some time. And so I did see the developer bring in. I apologize if I'm not using the quite the right terminology, but it what looked like they were drill seeding the property. So just just curious if it was an option to offer that as an exemption for property owners that might prefer to do that as opposed to mow four times a year?
Yeah, that that's perhaps something that that could be further explored. I I. I again, farmers use cover crops. I would say now a farmer often between rotating crops from year to year, they just may put in a cover crop. Which they get pretty good growth in one year and there's not a whole lot of weed because that land has been tended year after year after year and farmed year after year. So. If if it's a if it's a parcel that's been farmed, they would have much more luck doing that as opposed to some of these development parcels that have just sent bacon in and have a fair amount of. Weed infestation.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this? Seeing none, I do have a couple of what's that? I do have a couple of questions. When you mentioned in-house mowing, is any of this mowing being done by a contractor now?
There is none being done by a contractor currently.
Okay, you gave us figures for miles of right of way. But you receive quotes from the contractors on mowing and acres. Can you translate for me that eighty-five miles of right of way that needs to be mowed into how many acres that would be?
Willis, I'm gonna ask you to to jump jump in on that.
On July sixth, we were set to vote on this ordinance and we chose to continue it and not vote on it. You gave a similar presentation, but you didn't include contractor costs in the presentation. Is there a reason why that was excluded from the figures that was presented to council?
We we you're correct. We did not include the the contractor costs in that presentation. We did mention at the end of it that 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 was something that would possibly be a viable option to look into. At that point, and this would apply to the the current numbers that we have. Those are very rough estimates from very. Informal discussions with contractors about what they would charge per acre or per lane mile, which again, they they converted, can be converted to acres. So it may be more, it may be less. We're we're thinking that the numbers they gave us are pretty are pretty close, but we we did not include it at that point. In in the in that particular presentation because we were still developing those numbers. And it wasn't something essentially that we had been given direction to do. We had looked into it prior, though, so that we could certainly indicate, though, that it was something worth looking into.
Right. Well, you had a quote from Sierra. They had a hundred and thirty dollars an acre that could have been included in the presentation and given to council whenever we were set to vote on this.
I yeah, I certainly at the present, at the end of the presentation, when we had mentioned that that was something to look into, we probably could have given the the dollar amount at that point.
Okay, so if it's a hundred and thirty dollars an acre, how many acres are we talking about? They need to be mowed four times a year?
I I don't believe I don't believe we're talking a hundred and thirty acres at this point. Let me let me verify which with Willis, which which. And I need to be make sure I understand you're asking for the eighty, the eighty-two miles that we're currently mowing right now, what the acreage of that is?
Yes.
Okay, well, I've I've got somebody working on that acreage. Then we also, we.
I'll save you some time on that. It's approximately two hundred and forty-seven acres. So it's two hundred and forty-seven acres at a hundred and thirty-seven dollars an acre would be about thirty-four thousand dollars each time they need to mow. Mowing four times would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So why is there an almost fifty thousand dollar discrepancy between what you've been quoted from a contractor? And what it is that you're telling us it's going to cost to have a contractor do this work?
Sir, to be honest with you, I don't know what numbers you're referring to on what slide and which presentation in relation to what. So it's difficult for me to answer that question.
Where you told us that if we go with a contractor, it'll be a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar annual cost in order to do this.
To to do which to which mileage and and twenty-four foot wide or thirty-six foot wide? And with an open space exemption or without an open space exemption?
What is your hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar figure? What is that? What is that doing?
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars would be for a contractor in addition to what we are doing currently to mow the fifty-six point two miles. Of of right of way from the edge of from the edge of streets or the pavement to the adjacent property line. Doing three passes and doing it approximately seven times per year.
That's fifty-six miles. At a twenty-four foot swath.
That would be a thirty-six foot swath.
Keep in mind, some right of ways. Differing width, so it it's not a uniform width on all of those miles.
But thirty-six would be the most.
I I believe that's probably going to be our greatest, yes.
So by my math, we're talking about two hundred and forty-four acres, two hundred and forty-four acres being mowed three times a year. At thirty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. How does that figure differ from the hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars?
Sir, I I don't know which acreage you're talking about and and which which dollar figure we're applying to it or which width we're mowing that that you're applying to it.
Well, I've taken fifty-two eighty, which is the distance of a mile and multiplied it by thirty-six, which is the swath that you say needs to be mowed. And then I've taken and multiplied that by fifty-six miles. That gave me a total of ten thousand or ten million six hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. I divided that by forty-three five sixty, which is the square footage of an acre, giving me two hundred and forty-four point three six acres that need to be mowed three times a year. You received a quote from Sierra to mow the right of ways per acre at a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So when you multiply that one thirty-seven by two forty-four point three six, you end up with thirty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If you do that three times a year, that is significantly less than the hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars you're telling us that it's going to cost. So my question is, why is there a discrepancy between the quote that you received from Sierra and what you're presenting to council this evening?
I I again, I'm trying to discern where the hundred and thirty-seven dollar an acre cost from Sierra came from.
On June twenty-sixth, your employer, one of your employees emailed you and told you that that was the quote he received from Sierra. Was a hundred and thirty-seven dollars to mow an acre of right away.
And sir, I if you would like for us to, if you want to give me some time to go back and take a look at the, if you have the email that you want to send me, or I can look at those emails. We can go back and look through all those numbers that the contractor provided. And we can rerun the numbers and try to answer those questions, but I'm not going to engage in a in a game of of trying to figure out. These equations in in this format and because I don't want to provide information that's inaccurate or that's misleading. The information we've given you tonight is what we believe the cost would be for a contractor to provide those that mowing or do those services for us.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Noble.
While we're on this subject of costs, if we can keep it in-house, that would really be great so that we are providing jobs for. Hopefully, our residents. That would be my my preference. If there is a way to work this out, whether it's leasing the equipment or. Whatever the case might be, that some way we provide jobs for residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I was just gonna try to like listening to the back and forth. What I was what I was thinking it would sound like the cost difference miss was is that. Their proposal had us mowing seven times a year because of the new height requirements where. Currently, they're mowing three or four times a year. I think that's where the cost difference, it sounded to me. I'm just trying to was trying to clarify so we can get through. Trying to answer that because. I think, Mayor, that. Mike was suggesting that with the new, if we don't have any exemption with the new height requirements, we would have to increase the amount of. Times that we would mow it during the growing season to approximately seven times opposed to the three or four that are done today. It just seems to me where the. Where the cost difference was coming from.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mary. Thank thank council. Good evening. Jason Rogers here, community director. Just before I kind of we conclude the conversation as. Tricia Mason had noted earlier in during today's presentation. We have added that agricultural exemption with respect to the ordinance that is overseeing. Private property, large track weeds, wanting to get councils consensus direction. On continuing to incorporate that as this ordinance moves forward or further discussion as it relates to pulling it out. Just seeking clarification on that or confirmation on that direction.
Councilmember Hurst.
I I think we leave the exemption in there for open space, natural habitats. Moving forward, I don't I don't think that'd be an issue.
Anybody disagree with that or have additional comments? Councilmember Noble?
Councilmember Hurst, what about the the drainage basins and the. Detention ponds? I I thought it should only be for actual natural habitat as opposed to. Areas that could be more like weed collectors.
Yeah, I'd love to hear the possibility of of how to maintain those because can they become. A flood issue for the same reasons? I'm not sure. You know. I'm I'm definitely open to that discussion. I just, you know, I was more thinking the natural, the natural open spaces as well, but. Would love to hear the city's point of view on operational necessity.
And if I may, before Mr. Brown weighs in, good question, Councilmember Noble. Just want to be able to, once again, put some some framework around crafting of the ordinance. Obviously, the ordinance as crafted. Retains only to private property owners, as you'll note throughout a number of the ordinance that we have prepared for you and have had prepared for you. We identify exemptions as it relates to native wheat, native grasses, ornamental grasses, shrubs. We we also discuss things that are also exempted such as medians and open space that are not a requirement of a private property. Or private landowner to maintain or have the responsibility or the duty to maintain. Obviously, with our typical orders is we don't craft those for the standard application to us as a local government. We obviously run through those. Through a practice of either policy development and or obviously through our operations. So just wanted to be able to provide that for your continued consideration and discussion for the full body of council.
Councilmember Hurst.
I must have had my hands up. I apologize.
Any other comments regarding that? Seeing none. The only thing I want to add is, you know, we talk a lot about not wanting to see unfunded mandates coming down from the state. We don't want the state to pass a law and then expect us to have to fund it without a funding source for it. And I believe that if we pass this ordinance while transferring the responsibility of right-of-way maintenance onto landowners. We're basically doing to landowners, to the to the property owners in Commerce City, what we're complaining about the state legislature doing to us. If we're going to pass an ordinance that is going to require maintenance to be done on right-of-ways, then we should not be passing that ordinance that requires landowners and business owners. To have to fund that maintenance. That's unfair to them to have to go off and purchase that equipment to have to. Which most of them would not have to have to purchase your higher contract or do something along those lines. That's not fair to them. That's not what we're in the business. We're not here to pass ordinances that create undue costs on other members. So I would not support the ordinance. If it requires transferring the responsibility of right-of-way maintenance to other individuals in the city. Hey, well, last alibis on questions or comments regarding this topic. Seeing none, thank you both for your, all of you for your time, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is marijuana updates. Like to invite Dylan Gibson, the city clerk, to introduce the presentation.
Good evening and honorable mayor, mayor pro tem and members of city council. Tonight, we have a short presentation. I promise it'll be short since we're running a little long tonight. On a couple of staff-driven mayor. On a couple of staff-driven marijuana code updates that we'll be presenting to you for consideration. And then Tiffany will have information on two new, uh, marijuana licensing types, uh, allowed in state statute this year that municipality municipalities. Can allow within their jurisdictions, um, to see if council has an appetite for staff exploring those further. Um, so next slide, Jordan. Uh, with me tonight, we have our licensing coordinator Tiffany McGraw and our assistant city attorney Brian Swan. And then, uh, Mister Robert Sheesler, city attorney, if he, uh, feels like jumping in at any point tonight as well. Um, so first, a, a couple of updates, again, these were the, um, staff-driven ones we're, uh, wanting, uh, to bring forward to council for your consideration. Um, we've identified portions of our current marijuana license, uh, authority rules and procedure that are probably best suited to be codified in our municipal code. And a working draft red line version of that ordinance thus far, uh, was provided in the packet. Um, an example of some of those portions of the rules of procedure, um, that we're looking to codify or sections related to the marijuana licensing authorities duties and responsibilities or powers. Um, general application requirements and, uh, the conduct of licensing hearings. Um, the second, uh, Colorado state statute regarding ownership of marijuana licenses has changed. Um, publicly traded companies are now allowed to have a controlling ownership in marijuana licenses within Colorado. Currently, our city code, um, requires that any individual with a financial interest. Um, in a marijuana business, um, have a background investigation conducted. This creates a problem, um, then at what level does city staff background those with a financial interest in a publicly traded company that is applying for a marijuana license? Um, Tiffany's done some, uh, meetings with our police department that, uh, assists with our background investigations. Uh, other municipalities in the state, the marijuana enforcement division. And our recommendation is that the city conduct background investigations on individuals with a ten percent or higher controlling ownership in that publicly traded company applying for a. Marijuana license in the city. So those are just two brief updates of some staff, um, driven proposals. Uh, for our marijuana code that we are, that we'll be bringing forward to council for consideration, and I'm going to pass it over to Tiffany. And she'll provide you an update on those two new marijuana licenses types this year. So Tiffany, uh, it's all yours.
Thanks, Dylan. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, just, uh, moving forward with the presentation, next slide, Jordan. So, um, first up, I'm just going to recap, uh, just very quickly, uh, these two, a couple of new license types. And first, uh, is marijuana delivery. Um, so two thousand nineteen marijuana delivery was, uh, introduced. Uh, and this is, uh, uh, this license or this permit rather, um, authorizes, uh, stores. Uh, retail stores, medical stores to deliver their, uh, respective product to, uh, to customers. Uh, medical delivery actually, uh, began last year in January and retail delivery, uh, began this year on January. Um, there are some restrictions, of course, uh, you know, one delivery per day, private residences only, that excludes college campuses. Um, and then there is, of course, some vendor training that is required, uh, for those who hold, uh, this permit type. Uh, and this is something that, uh, we must opt into. So, next slide, Jordan. Currently, um, there are only six, according to the, uh, marijuana enforcement division's website, there are only six, uh, delivery permits, five of which are in Boulder. Uh, one is, uh, in Longmont. Next slide. And then next, uh, marijuana hospitality, um, also, uh, two thousand nineteen marijuana hospitality was introduced. Uh, and this license type, um, it allows, uh, retail food establishments, uh, to apply for this license type. Uh, allowing a specific portion of the establishment to be dedicated to hospitality. Um, and, um. It, uh, authorizes a hospitality space for medical and retail, uh, just product and concentrate to be consumed on site. Um, with this hospitality license, there's also a hospitality and sales, uh, license that allows retail. Uh, marijuana concentrate and products to be sold and consumed both, uh, on-site at a retail marijuana business. And this is also something that municipalities must opt into. Next slide. And according to the MED's, uh, website, there are currently three hospitality licenses in the state, two of which belong in Colorado Springs and one in, uh, Denver. Next.
Thank you, Tiffany. Uh, so as I promised at the beginning, this was a brief presentation to just to update council. Uh, so we're available to answer any questions you may have or receive any feedback or general direction council wants to provide. Again, um, if council wants us to pursue looking into either of those new license types further, we'll need consensus from council to do so. If council wants to explore allowing either license type, then we'll work with internal and external stakeholders. That would be involved in the issuance or enforcement of those two license types and then bring back a draft presentation for further consideration that would outline. What those two license types may look like in our city and gather further council input before we put forward another ordinance allowing those. Um, if council does not wish to explore either of those license types further or wants to bring this back at a later date after more municipalities, uh, go through these programs. That's always an option as well. And again, we're here for any questions or feedback.
Councilmember Hurst.
Hey, thanks for the presentation. That's, um, two interesting, um, things to consider. My first question would revolve around, has there been any, any interest from our business community, uh, in this industry? As of that, I mean, has anybody, you know, called you and said, when is, when are you going to allow us to do this?
Uh, Tiffany, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we've had express interest in either of these two license types yet. I know a couple have mentioned it in passing, maybe a year or two ago, but nothing concrete or, uh, desire to explore it further by staff.
That's correct.
I appreciate that. I, um. I'll have to say, although there are municipalities in other places such as California that have been doing this for at least a year now. Um, so it's not like we couldn't learn. I'm not, uh, eager to be the guinea pig in Colorado on this. Um, from my personal perspective, I'm perfectly fine tabling this to a later date. And kind of watching those that are taking this on, um. Learning from their challenges and, and, and understanding their successes and seeing if that's something that we want to take on.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, um, if we were to allow this, does the city. Know approximately how much tax is the city will recoup per year?
Uh, not necessarily. So these are fairly new license types, and before we, uh, kind of started the process of gathering a lot more detailed information. We just wanted to see if council had an appetite for considering either of those two license types. I'm assuming, you know, i- increased sales and services and the ease of which, uh, customers could receive product would increase sales somewhat. Um, but again, these are so new and there's so few in the state, it's hard to give you that number to say, you know. Colorado Springs or Denver experienced X amount of growth whenever they introduced these license types.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm with, uh, Councilman Hurst. I think, uh, we just kind of keep this in our radar and see what's going on throughout the state. Um, I think, uh, I know it's coming up, but we wanted to have a marijuana discussion as it is. And I think it's, uh, scheduled, I don't know when, but I think we need to get that, um, kind of just. Right before we step into uncharted waters with this. Um, I do believe though, I think this is, uh, something that's gonna. Come our way and, you know, if, if staff, um. Could keep an eye on what other cities are doing, um, but at this time I'd like to table it until we. Figure out the other marijuana issue that we're having or the discussion and then, uh, continue with this. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Um, I'm also in agreement with Councilmember Hurst. I really would rather wait and see how this goes with other cities, other municipalities. I, I definitely don't want to take, take charge and take the lead on this right now.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm in agreement with the previous four council members. Table this for now, no need to jump in. Let's see what happens with other communities.
Councilmember Smith.
Just kind of echoing what everybody else said. I think, um, I know it's probably the wave of the future and it's going to be coming sooner rather than later, but I think. Let's see what everybody else is doing and then we'll come back to it.
Any other comments or questions regarding this topic? Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, um, so on the topic of, of marijuana licensing. When is our next discussion? And, and one of the things is because, you know, I think several of us have been contacted by nineteen oh six. About, um, off-site storage permits for finished product. And. Whatever industry it is, you know, my, my idea of, um, business retention and business growth. Doesn't really have lines on industry lines and the, and the, the issue that they brought forward. Is not necessarily one that I think would be a massive influx of change in the, in the industry, but it does seem to make sense because. Marijuana licensing or, or regulations around marijuana. Really have to tell you what you can do. It's not, there's no like gray areas around, um, operational kind of flexibility. It has to be explicitly written into the law for you to be able to do it. And so, um, to me. You know, there's, there's not a ton of businesses that are doing this in Denver. There's not a ton of businesses, but. To level the playing field and to allow for businesses to grow, I'd love to take that, um, discussion forward, you know, with. Other council members because what we've learned about, you know, just the, the marijuana business in Commerce City as a whole where. Um, you know, the crime, maybe crime is not, you know, increasingly measurable because of it, and this is really focused on a storage facility in a, in an area already zoned appropriately. And I, and I wouldn't be asking for us to consider anything out of those kind of parameters, but I, I think it's something that. Um, whether you like the industry or not, it's one of the most, uh, um. Financially stable industries in our state right now and, um, continuing to let, uh. Regulations adapt to, to provide a safe, uh, industry work environment as well. Um, is important because, you know, some regulations, um, by accident created more unsafe environment in. In that industry because there, it, it creates opportunities for black market and other things to take place. Um, inside a well-regulated industry. So, um, if we don't discuss it tonight because the time's gone long, I would just ask that we get that on. Um, our agenda for a, a, a quick discussion if we can in the very near future.
Absolutely, Councilmember Hurst. Um. So staff, right, with the, um, codification of some of our rules of procedure and then the ten percent change, we wanted to kind of get. This in front of you all for, uh, for your information and get that ordinance for your consideration at, uh, regular meeting. And then once we kind of have our marijuana code where it would be, uh, just so we're clear and we're hitting your expectations, council would want a discussion. More related to the licensing, because I know we had our land development related and land use related conversation back in October of last year, so. Um, this future conversation is going to be specifically centered around licensing types and regulations, correct? Or are you talking even broader than that? I just want to make sure we're hitting expectations whenever we do bring this back.
I, I'm not asking for us to create some general op, you know, crazy operational flexibility in that industry, but. Um, it is my, it is my personal feeling that marijuana regulation has and will continue to be kind of a learn-as-you-go from a regulatory standpoint. We, we start off very strict, stringent, and we learn what's working and what's not. And you look for opportunities that are mutually beneficial to improve the overall business environment, um, of an industry. And so I think we've come to the point where some things. Make a little more sense to, to deregulate and give a little more flexibility with, with still having a pretty, um, set standard for safety. Um, in the community and, you know, obviously if it's into your land development code, um, you're not, you know, inhibiting on your neighbors, anything like that. So I'm not asking for super significant changes. I just want us to listen to the, to the business community, no matter the industry. And if the, uh, regulatory change makes sense, then I think it's good for us to discuss and kind of advocate for. So, um, you know, thi- this comes from one specific company, but I think there's, um, through brief discussions, opportunity. Uh, it opens doors for other companies as well, and it wouldn't just be a single beneficial, uh, discussion in, in that sense.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our final topic of the evening, which is the city manager search update. Will Armando Wadiola, Director of Human Resources, please make the presentation?
Give me just one moment to move Armando back over. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Armando. Are you ready?
I am ready. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Um, I come forward tonight because I wanted to, uh, confirm. The dates for the city manager preliminary interviews. Um, I sent out three dates that were sent out three weeks ago. And I had everybody rank them and I just wanted to confirm, uh, based on the information or the response that I received. It looked like January thirtieth was the top rank, but because I didn't have everybody, uh, ranked that as the number one. Uh, priority, I just wanted to make sure that date works, or if we can come up with a different date. That everybody would be in favor for, so we can, uh, get the preliminary interviews, um, started. Is everybody okay with the, the January thirtieth? Because I only had, I only had five, uh, respondents that actually ranked that as top. So I just wanted to make sure if there was the additional four, we're okay with doing January thirtieth. Otherwise, I'm open to, to give some, a different, you know, some different dates. I don't want to push it too far out, but I'd like to at least push it a week or two weeks out if, if that thirtieth doesn't work.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Armando. Um, do we know what time on the thirtieth approximately?
Yes, it would be an eight-thirty to five-thirty. We'd be interviewing all seven candidates and every. Actually have a, a thirty-minute slot to interview the, all the individual candidates.
Because unfortunately that was my last priority because I had other commitments, but I could for the morning part of that. But from like, you know, one o'clock on, I would be unavailable.
Okay, a- and I would really want everybody to be involved. I think it's important that we're all, so if we can, if we can push it out. Out, if, if anybody can oppose, I can give you the, I would like either, uh, Thursday, Friday or Saturday, those are the three days that I would look out. And the reason why is the consultant wants it towards the end of the week so we can have final number or a final count for that following Monday so we can have a discussion.
I would think that for most people who work Monday through Friday, that a Saturday is probably going to work best for everybody. Um, I don't know, uh, if, uh, January thirtieth doesn't work for everybody, then perhaps pushing it out two weeks would put us, uh, February thirteenth or so.
February thirteenth would be two weeks out or, or February sixth. If we, if I can at least confirm this, the sixth or the thirteenth would be great.
Uh, let's just do a show of hands. Anybody prefer the thirteenth? Anybody, please raise your hands if you like February thirteenth. And February sixth. And looks like February sixer.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for compromising, everyone.
Councilmember Grimes, you got comments?
I just had a question, Armando. Uh, thirty minutes per candidate, but each of us are interviewing them separately. Is that why it's going to take all day? And will our times be consecutive? Like, will I have my thirty minutes with each of the candidates back to back? How is that going to work?
It's gonna, well, we have a little, we have about an hour and a half. If you do the math, we, we worked it out, so we'll have, you'll have about an hour break in between. Um, it's just going to be sporadic, so it's not everybody going to have it at noon because it's going to be back to back, but it'll be about an hour that you have a downtime. That's why we're scheduling from eight thirty to five thirty. I'll send a better schedule out once, now that I have a confirmed date. Um, we did have a candidate that might drop. Um, so I'll have a little bit more information this week and I'll make sure that I'll send out an email with all that information and at least the slots filled out for February sixth. So you guys are well aware of who you're scheduled or who you're scheduled, when you're scheduled to speak. So you guys are well aware of who you're scheduled, or who you're scheduled, when you're scheduled to speak with the candidates.
Okay, thanks, Armando.
And then also just a, I think I was, I also was requested for like a, a packet with questions. I can provide questions. The consultant did want to kind of leave that open for, for individual council members to ask whatever questions or interest that they would from the candidate to get an understanding and a better feel for the candidate. But I will also provide a packet with general questions for interviewing that would assist you guys during the interview process.
I watched a webinar this weekend from another municipality in another state that's looking for a new police chief and they asked each of the three candidates that they had, three of the same questions and one that was tailored to that individual candidate. And I thought that was a pretty good format that worked. They were able to get through all three in under an hour and a half with, you know, 30 minutes dedicated. So I think that that was a pretty good format. So I think if we have questions that are across the board, everybody gets asked, but then one that is unique to each candidate, I think that's a good format.
Okay, I'll get, I'll go back to the consultant. I'll work on something like that, Mayor.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, sorry, I hate to poo-poo everybody's discussion, but I, I'm not going to be available on the 6th. I was thinking we were voting on the 30th or 13th. It's my daughter's birthday on the 6th and we're already out, so I just wanted to mention that.
Does anybody have a reason why we can't do this on the 13th? Councilmember Grimes.
I'll be traveling on the 13th.
Okay. And how about February 20th? Anybody have something on the 20th that would preclude them from being able to participate? Seeing none, can you push that out to the 20th, sir, so that everybody is available?
Yes, sir. Will do.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Great. Councilmember Hurst.
No, I've just failed to put my hand up.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update and look forward to interviews on the 20th. That concludes our presentations for the evening. We'll move into reports. Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things tonight. One is that I wanted to let you know that Jenna and Cheryl will be meeting with Lacy Knowles of DA Davidson, and that's regarding the bank loan RFPs that will go out for the ECA GID to start that process for financing those improvements. And then also first round of vaccinations have been occurring for first responders and the police officers had opportunity to be vaccinated in recent weeks through other sources, but Kirk Dominic, our Emergency Services Manager, was able to establish vaccination site at Bison Run for first responders. And that started today and will continue Wednesday and Friday of this week. So our first responders are, are getting vaccinated. And then also wanted to let you know that Cheryl, Director of Finance, is going to be sending out the preliminary financial report for 2020 here shortly. And it will have good news. The budget that was adopted for 2020 projected using 8.2 million of fund balance in the general fund. And, you know, these are still preliminary numbers, but we ended up using only 3.7 million of fund balance of the general fund. So revenues came in higher than we anticipated and our cost-cutting measures were very successful. The department directors did a good job of holding down expenditures and so ended the year on a, on a better note than what we anticipated when we adopted the budget. So wanted to celebrate that with you and that's it for this night. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I've been here this whole time. I just wanted to run through something on the agenda next week. As you all know, ordinance 2266, the oil and gas LDC amendments is on your very packed agenda. There will be a very full packet regarding that. I wanted to run through the process for amendments. Please call me this week if you have any concerns or questions. It'll be in the script and in the packet. What we've been doing lately is when the ordinance is brought up for discussion, any ordinance is brought up for discussion. Council, here's a presentation, ask questions, and then before acting on a motion to introduce and approve it or pass it on second reading, we've had an opportunity for a council member to offer an amendment. We're going to use that as an opportunity for i- we're going to use that in this process where we'll go through the presentation, have discussion and questions and and then the script will contain options for various amendments. There are five amendments that staff is has, is outlining for you all to consider. Four of those are items to conform the, the ordinance to the recent COGCC rules. Think those should be fairly non-controversial because they're mandated at the state level, but because they are somewhat substantive, we thought it was appropriate to bring those as an amendment. And then the fifth is the change recommended by the planning commission. So just to have a process laid out for how council can consider that before acting on the ordinance itself on first reading. And then, of course, if there are other amendments that people want to bring, those could come at that point as well. So I hope that all makes sense. We'll lay it out clearly so that the procedural part is the least difficult part of the evening. That was all I wanted to mention tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, for that update. Are there any council members wishing to make a report? Councilmember Noble.
Thank you. I wanted to, since we've had some discussion of late regarding reverse setbacks, I wanted to clarify what setbacks are. A setback is from an existing home. A reverse setback is from an existing well. There are not only, not only Fort Collins and Erie, but also Windsor currently have reverse setbacks. I would also like to comment regarding the oil and gas activity that was occurring at 120th and Nucleus Street. The COGCC has told me that this was Great Western, by the way, that was doing this. They are not the owner of the well. For those wells previously plugged within a 1,500-foot radius of a newly proposed well, if the original plugging was not as protective of water as current requirements, the re-entry and replugging of previously abandoned wells is a requirement of the new development. The new development refers to new oil and gas development. Great Western is not taking ownership of the well that was being plugged and abandoned that remains with the previous owners or current owners. However, they would then be responsible for the plugging and abandoning in order to meet the new law of the COGCC. The reason that this is important is because it is related directly to Great Western's oil and gas site in unincorporated Adams County called Edmondson. It's 24 wells. It would frac under E470, under Outlook and down to 120th and over to Buckley. So the 1,500-foot was because of the directional wellbores. I really was confused about why Great, Great Western was even involved in the plugging and abandoning, but the COGCC cleared it up for me. I just wanted to let everyone know in case you had seen that, that equipment last week. Thank you.
Any other council members wishing to make a report? Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, had a meeting with the chamber last week and they are working on a new initiative. Well, it's already out, but kind of publicizing a new initiative called Shop Where I Live. I have a link for it. I'm happy to share it with everybody. Basically, what it does is allows local business owners to place their goods online in a, a one, one location where people can shop locally. If they can't make it out to a store or if a store is not able to be open or, you know, what have you. So I do have the link for that. Happy to share it with everybody. And in fact, I think what I'll do is just send it on to Roger. And Roger, if you could get that out to council, that'd be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, Councilwoman Grimes reminded me. We had Councilwoman Grimes and I were both on the Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge meeting last week as well. The main news coming out of there is that the arsenal has now opened up new trail paths. They are going to continue to manage opening up more accessibility. You know, obviously COVID shut down some accessibility there. But I can't remember the exact number. I believe it's like an additional 5.7 miles of trail access that's through there now. And the, the key thing to notate there is that we now have on the north side of the arsenal, a way to park at one of the parking lots and walk into the arsenal from there. And, and of course, those are still sep- separated from the bison and you're not going to walk on a path that has, you know, bison there. But there's also one on the other side as well. And so they're, they're, they're starting to open up more accessibility and these are brand-new pathways. But there's also opening up accessibility that was closed down for COVID. And so just want to make sure everybody knows the arsenal saw a record amount of people this year for, probably for obvious reasons, but in, in that same time, you know, the, the management has worked with the US DOT to build new, new pathways that we all have the opportunity now, no matter what side of the city you live on, to explore the arsenal with several miles of new pathway accessible for us. So I think that's pretty exciting as well.
Councilmember Grimes. I'm sharing. Councilmember Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our first art meeting for the dog track and so that's pretty exciting and we'll be sending out some information on how the community could get involved, but that was Friday.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everyone know on the 14th of January, Councilwoman Noble and myself attended the senior commission meeting. And just wanted to put it out there. They kind of had voted as a board to ask for the city council to try to help them possibly look into hiring a senior navigator. They were feeling like there's not a lot of resources or help for seniors in the, in the community. You know, we had let them know, you know, we would let, you know, the mayor and other city councils know that because, you know, they did express concern that there wasn't enough. They felt, you know, the members that attended the meeting, that there wasn't a whole lot of resources available for them or, you know, if, if staff, you know, and the mayor and other city council could look, keep that in mind, you know, that they're you know, the ones that are on the board, they do feel like they need more resources offered to them in this community. So I wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, mine, I had a Zoom call with Commissioner Odorizio and other mayors in Adams County to discuss the structured settlements related to the opioid lawsuits. There's the state attorney general and is trying to push down a formula of it. So much money goes directly to communities, so much money goes regionally. And so we'll probably have, they're scheduled weekly, but they'll probably get canceled more often than not, but regular updates is that formula progresses. Attended the Commerce City Historical Society Board Meeting that they had on the 12th and was great to see the good things that they have planned for the upcoming year and hopefully most of the events they can do in person instead of virtually. Last week, we had the Metro Mayor's Caucus Retreat. They did push out what they want to do, similar to what we have legislative priorities. And unfortunately, they sent it out during a survey after our last council meeting and we didn't have another council meeting in the month of January. So I did not participate in the survey to identify legislative priorities without consent to council on which ones we agree to and which ones we don't agree to. We've recently agreed to a new philosophy on how it is that we do consensus statements. Originally, a five mayor said no to an item. Then that was not considered a consensus. Now it requires two-thirds of voting members to say yes to it for it to be a consensus statement. So that'll go forward. All those legislative priorities are supposed to be kicked back out to the committees for Metro Mayor Caucus, the Executive Committee, Homeless Housing Transportation, in order to get a little bit of refinement and then we'll be coming back and hopefully we will have an opportunity as a council to vote on whether or not we want to sign on to those legislative priorities that the Metro Mayor Caucus is pushing. Good news, a couple of months ago, you allowed us to sign on to a request for a grant from Wells Fargo for the homeless flex fund. And the Metro Mayor Caucus was a recipient of $300,000 on that. Last year, we contributed $3,000 to that flex fund. So you can see the $300,000 contribution from Wells Fargo and that should go a long way towards regionally looking at homelessness. That is all I had for meetings. I also had the area board meeting. Sounds like the fire department's got a lot of expansion going on. You know, a couple of years ago, voters approved a mill levy increase for them. And now with the Gallagher Amendment going away, they have pretty much steady funding that won't be affected by a reduction in the residential assessment rate. And they are putting that to good use. Adams 14 is back to a hybrid model, allowing some in-class students as well as still some remote learning. So it's good to see that they finally have the opportunity to get back into a classroom, which is critically important for youth development. So glad to see that going on. The Arsenal did give, and the Refuge both gave an update on everything going on out there. Yes, the trails was one of the things that was mentioned. Also, we're going to start seeing probably some construction going on. They're going to tear down one of their old facilities and build a new filter facility that will be used to filter the water that is out there on the arsenal. So you may see construction activity taking place actually on the property out there while they do that. And Tri-County Health is also working on a new air monitoring and ground monitoring stuff for the landfill over on Tower and doing reports on that. So we should start seeing some information regarding the environmental impact of that landfill. And that's going to be critically important as Legato starts to spin up as well as the homes 88th Avenue Northwest of there, going all the way up. So it's good to see that Tri-County Health has an active role in monitoring that. That is the extent of my report. We'll go for alibis. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
I apologize, didn't lower my hand.
Councilmember Hurst.
Mayor, I just wanted to ask you a quick question. Have you heard anything about the water softening project and if it's still on schedule?
Yes, we had a Water Commission meeting that is supposed to turn on about the end of February and they anticipate softened water being in the system. The first half of March is the, the schedule right now. They did have some delays due to COVID with the subcontractors and everybody, but they seem to be on track now. So that was the latest estimate that was given. There is some confusion out there. There, I think their website says they're going to set it to seven. Jim Jones, the district manager, said they're going to set it to six, which matches what Denver Water is producing. For those that don't realize, they're actually pushing water up Tower Road from Denver Water. And so it's going to mix in with our water and so the sixth and the sixth should match up pretty good. But that was the latest that came out of that meeting.
Appreciate that. Yeah, because on their website, it said they started charging the water softening fee on a monthly basis. So I just wanted to see if that was still.
They did. They did. One thing that were, that I did ask was, you know, the, the cost of it. And they do think that the cost is going to come in lower than what they initially estimated whenever that went out and got approved for, for doing. So it should be interesting. They also say this is going to improve the taste of the water as well as reduce the hardness. So I think we all are, have our fingers crossed that it's going to have a positive impact on the water quality in Commerce City and really get away from that negative reputation that the water district has and the quality of the water that they produce. Councilmember Noble.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. In addition to the Water Commission meeting with the mayor and the senior commission with Councilmember Alan Thomas, we also had the first Fire Commission meeting of the new council with Councilmember Madera. So that was great to meet with Chief Vensel and also Chief Nichols and members of the Fire Board, the District Board. I think one thing that was I think one thing that was particularly important that, that came out of it is that we are very close to reverse nine-one-one and we should all be able to access it. How many people here have reverse, have signed up for reverse nine-one-one? Okay, it's coming. Good. Okay. Councilmember Frank has it. Wonderful. But it's going to be a big push out and we can address some of these questions that have arisen about Suncor Refinery and that they can just send to people who live around Suncor. They could, you know, they can narrow it down in any fashion that they choose. So I think that will be really important for everyone to be part of. So thank you all.
Again, one last time, any alibis? Anybody? Seeing none, we are adjourned for the evening. We'll have a regular council meeting on February first with a robust schedule and lots of important things to discuss to include probably an executive session on that. Tomorrow evening, we have a follow-up on setting the 2021 priorities and as well as the city attorney evaluation. Both those meetings start at six PM, followed by the other meetings. So look forward to getting that important business carried out. Mr. Tinklinberg, before we sign off.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You reminded me of something I meant to bring up with council and that is that agenda for February one currently has us ending at eleven thirty-five PM. So obviously, it's jam full of stuff. Couple of the big items are the oil and gas ordinance slated for two hours of discussion. Another one is the executive session, which is currently slated for one hour. That's regarding DIA noise. So I can pull some of this stuff off and delay it, but some of it is, some of these items are items that the city council members requested. So I don't want to offend, but the reality is given, given the policy that you adopted to limit it to basically four and a half hours, this would exceed that. So I guess my first question is, are you okay with me pushing some of this stuff to a later meeting? Which means March at the earliest.
Councilmember Noble.
Um, I was curious why we had to do the oil and gas on Monday, February first, why it couldn't be postponed to the fifteenth? If that was, if the fifteenth was a less busy time or, or the following two weeks, since this is something that hasn't been voted on since November sixth of 2019.
The fifteenth is a study session. So the next regular, that's a holiday. Let's see. Excuse me a second.
Fifteenth is a president's day, I do believe. So our next regular meeting would be March first.
Right. That is correct.
Then what about doing a special meeting for the oil and gas session?
That's certainly your option.
I just don't want people to feel like they're going crazy during something that is as important as that discussion will be. Or feeling constrained in any fashion.
Let me ask this. Does anybody have a board or commission commitment for Tuesday evenings, the first Tuesday of the month? You do great. How about a Wednesday evening? Anybody have one on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month? First Thursday of the month. Great. We'll call for a special meeting for February third. Excuse me, that's February fourth, which would be the Councilman Wadiola.
I think I'm trying to pull up my, but do we have Youth Commission Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Youth Commission.
All right. How about the second Tuesday of the month, which would be February ninth?
That would be Parks and Rec for me and Councilman Hearst.
You have Parks and Rec every Tuesday?
Second Tuesday of, of the month and then I have Cultural Council.
What's the first Tuesday of the month? Okay, how about Wednesday?
Good on Wednesday.
What's that?
I'm good on Wednesday.
Second Wednesday of the month, does anybody have a board or commission meeting?
We have the housing authority.
Okay, second, Mr. Sheasley.
Yeah, Mayor, if the agenda is only running an hour past your ten-thirty, I know you're looking at alternate dates. The executive session is scheduled for an hour. I think would only be half an hour. The other item I was going to discuss probably is going to be pushed and doesn't have an urgency behind it. And then you also have the parking ordinance that night that could move to March as well. So that the primary focus could be on the oil and gas ordinance. And then council also doesn't have to approve it that night. If it could be introduced and discussed and then continued, just a couple of other options there.
Great, thank you. I do anticipate that the discussion over the land development code will be lengthy and will be in-depth. So I think they're dedicating a meeting specific to that topic to ensure that we don't feel like we are being rushed on any matters would be the most prudent thing to take place. So if nobody has something on the second Thursday of the month, Councilmember Waiola.
Sorry, Mayor, I just pulled up February second, actually. We're good. I'm good.
Hey, does anybody have, anybody have anything scheduled for February second that would prevent them from attending a special meeting? Seeing none, we'll call for a special meeting on February second for the purpose of discussing the ordinance related to the land development code for oil and gas. So we will have all other agenda items on February first and follow up on the second with an additional meeting. Any other questions, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to share with you that on February second, Community Development does have a planning commission that night as well. I will have to check to see what we have on the agenda, but just wanted to share that with you all as well.
All right, would that meeting interfere with us having a special meeting?
I'd have to check to see what we have on the agenda, but potentially.
Okay, you can let me know whenever you guys send me the request for the special meeting.
What about February ninth then?
February ninth, I believe.
Oh, that's right. They had something.
Yeah, so, okay, worst case, we can go with another time to take that. But I do think that having a meeting that is dedicated to this topic because it was going to be probably a lengthy conversation with a lot of input coming back and forth. So I think that not wanting to concern that to a, another meeting or another meeting's agenda would be the most prudent action.
Mr. Mayor, I interrupt just for a minute. Because it would be a special meeting, I want to be very clear that it would, that whichever we change to that special meeting, it still includes citizen comment and that has to be put in the notification. Because generally, we have these special meetings without citizen comment, but we can include citizen comment if we choose to and if we notify the public that we are.
Mr. Sheasley, would we do citizen communication as part of the ordinance discussion?
Yes, if it's a special meeting, it would just be the hearing on the ordinance. And I think that's probably what Councilmember Noble was referring to. There, there would be an opportunity for the public to comment, both written and orally. We'll make sure that the agenda accommodates that.
Okay, and so that citizen communication would be restricted to that topic item and we would not do regular citizen communication where anybody can speak on any topic they wish to participate on.
Unless council wants there to be that, but there would be public, you're, you're right. Unless you want the citizen communication, it would just be public comment on the ordinance. Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody seeing as we're going to have citizen communication the night before on February first, that any communication on the special meeting on February second is directed only towards the land development code chain ordinance? Everybody okay with that? Be a lot of nodding heads. Okay. Mr. Rogers?
So the, the conflict that we have with Planning Commission that night is that we have staff member that is the project manager for oil and gas, who's also presenting that night a case before the commission.
What time does the commission start?
Six o'clock, sir.
All right. Other alternatives? Councilmember Grimes.
Just curious what the flexibility is of the Planning Commission's agenda. Is it possible to change that one item to a different night for Planning Commission?
Sorry about that. Having some user error of my, my mic and my camera. What we have that night is a zoning item that's going for council. We have to reach out to the Planning Commission to see whether or not they are willing and open to that adjustment. And obviously, we'd have to make that developer aware as well that the project's not going forward.
How do they know it's happening?
We have already scheduled, given that it's next week out, they were aware that they were moving forward with their item going to planning commission for our protocol.
February sixteenth?
February second, man.
I'm suggesting February sixteenth.
For what, ma'am?
I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I'm suggesting February sixteenth.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Uh, I can't do the sixteenth. Did we say the eleventh? Anybody could do the eleven? Thursday.
That, that's the Senior Commission. No, no, that's done it. That's done it at five. Well, what time? Well, what's done at five?
Senior Commission?
No, we start at that three.
Three and we end at five.
Okay, so it would be, what, okay, what time would it be on the eleventh if we do the eleventh?
Six PM like normal meetings.
Okay, okay, I guess that would work then. Okay.
Does anybody have a conflict on February eleventh to conduct a meeting? Seeing none, Councilman Wadiola. Again, okay, okay. Call for a special meeting for February eleventh to see the planning, excuse me, the land development code ordinance on first reading. If it is done on February eleventh, would it make the March first meeting? Or would it have to be delayed until the March fifteenth meeting, Mr. Sheasley, for a second reading?
If it is approved on the eleventh, there would be, I believe, from March first, I do the counting. Depends how quickly the clerk can get it published, but I think it could work. Yes.
March fifteen is a regular council meeting as an alternative, otherwise.
Okay, just trying to figure out where we are on timetable of getting that on second reading as well. So, okay, we will call for a special meeting for February to discuss settlements and the rest of the agenda for February first can stay without having to worry about running over.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody else for input on that. Have a great night. Have a good week for the residents and we will see everybody else back tomorrow night for the 2021 priorities and for Mr. Sheasley's evaluation. Good night.